Okay, I think I'm allowed now. We're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of April 27, 2020. Madam clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Here.
Bavacqua?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Heathley?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
All right, thank you. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the republic which has been under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good, everybody. Welcome to our virtual city council meeting. Thank you, council and everybody for tuning in. First, we will go to public comments scheduled tonight. So first, just to get right off, get started. Have a presentation, the DDA 2020 budget. And then also after the budget presentation, we'll have Christie do a road to recovery plan. So Ben, who is the Ben Giovanelli, who's the chairman of the DDA, is going to present the budget. So Ben, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council for this opportunity. I would like to say that I would have preferred that we had these type of meetings when I was on council. So sitting at home is nice. So I like the way you guys are running things. Keep it up. This is great. In all seriousness, you know, before you is our budget for 2021. I will say that we had intended to come before you with a fantastic idea for the front porch project. We've been socking away money for several years and had, you know, Christie and Nick and the team had come with a fantastic idea and the board was super supportive of it. And then, you know, as the old saying goes, just when you think you have things figured out, God's got other plans for you. So, so our budget that we putting before you now is essentially, there's a few items we'll go over in a second. But by and large, and this is sort of following, the mayor is also on DDA because of his position, of course, so he's up to speed and I know that, and this as well, but you know, we wanted to put something in to get it going, but the full intention is, is we don't really know what it is as time starts to evolve here. So we fully expect and anticipate that there'll be budget amendments that come along as, as you know, the situation sort of evolves and reveals itself. But I will say that we did have the DDA's first meeting on, first virtual meeting on April 15th, which was great. Super fun, see everybody smiling faces. We've been in lockdown for so long, it was nice to, to see everybody doing well and, and giving people the chance to participate. So had a really robust meeting, sort of walked through. You know, what does it look like when we come out of this? And the presentation you're gonna see this evening from Christie was what she presented to the board a couple of weeks ago with some additions to it since then, because as we all know, I mean, the stuff is changing by the minute. It's very hard to plan because we don't really know what it is once, you know, the governor releases, releases the hound, so to speak, but we want to be prepared. In terms of the 2021 budget, really the main thing we wanted to focus on, I think you guys have already seen, I don't know if Anthony, if the budget them has come before you or not, but we did move money from capital to take care of three months of debt service for the parking fund for April, May and June. So that's this current fiscal year. And then we moved $50,000 into business development and PSD to sort of get at the life after COVID that Christie will speak to in a moment. So that, that amendment's already been brought before you, I think. If it hasn't, it's coming soon. So maybe that's a, stay tuned. In regards to the 2021 budget, revenues sort of are what they are. We have no visibility into actual collections based on, you know, how everything sort of shakes out, but our assumption is, is that, you know, the revenues that Anthony has set forth for us as forecast are going to be realizable. There's a few items that kind of direct your attention to on the, on the expense side. So on page five of the budget in your packet, contractual services, which is 494-752, you'll see last year we had 150 grand and that is our contribution to the PSD for Big Bright. And this year, that contribution is now 466,658. The idea there is, is that in, at some point, you guys will talk about this, but the, the DDA is basically foregoing the collection of the PS, the principal shopping district assessment for the year. So that's, that's driving the lion's share of that contribution. So there's that. On same page down 494-896, about three quarters of the way to the bottom. There's a pretty big delta year over year on retirement contribution from 1905 to 2706. We were told by the city that we had some true up that had to happen with respect to staff. So that's what's driving that number and then it goes down in future years. So I can defer to Anthony on the explanation of that. But we were walked through that. On the operation side, not much is changing, although we did put some more money in the budget for printing and office supplies with the thought process there that we're gonna have to be doing a lot more communication via print and people not wanting to come out of their homes. So we're probably gonna have to step that up. So that was a thought process there. Next page on page six. On 494-896, which is the contract services business development. So the thought process in years past has always been, we're trying to sock away money for front porch. And pre-COVID, we had fully intended to coming before council and pitching the idea of the front porch project, which would have been on the farmer's lot. It was a fantastic plan. Everybody was super excited, but as it turns out, we're not doing that, right? So we took 50 grand from the 2020 budget, which ends on June 30th of this year for, to PSD and to biz dev to work on the strategy coming out from COVID. That'll get us to June 30th and then we put another $100,000 towards it from seven one till whatever. Once again, it's just a placeholder. We have, I haven't seen any budget yet as to how we're gonna spend that. So this is a placeholder for us now. And then whenever we find out what that is, it'll come before you guys, just so you, those full transparency, you know what's going on, but we wanted to at least set that forth. So people could start planning. Because we feel that, you know, we're gonna have to do a lot of legwork that we typically wouldn't have to do in order to try and get people comfortable coming back downtown again. On 494-896, contract services dash maintenance, that 22979, that's the New Horizons, if memory serves right, Christie.
Um, yes.
Yeah. So that's why. So there's nothing the year before, but 22979 now. So that's just the, the money for New Horizons. Although I don't know, while we're talking about that, how they're gonna come back in or whether they're gonna go, get back going again, but.
To be determined.
Yeah, right. So I mean, we're just trying to do this, thinking that this is gonna be sort of, you know, situation normal, but it's really not. On 494-896, professional development, there's a $9,000 placeholder in there for some training that was going to happen that we were getting money from this, from the county on. So it's actually zero and that's, well, it's like, I think 500 bucks for travel incidentals. But we're getting money from the county for that. That's up in revenue. But once again, don't know if that's gonna happen or not because of all this. So that's what that is. Me being on council for 12 years, I know what you guys are looking for. So I'm trying to go right to those things to try and at least, you know, help you out. Aside from that, once we get into capital, it's a total crap shoot right now because we really just don't know. We're leaving 250 grand in for 153 for streetlights. And then the amounts that were needed for capital per the activities between the city and in us for the projects that we're responsible for. And then lastly, down on the bottom of page seven, the 494-965, we're transferring, transfer to the parking fund last year, last budget year was 50 grand. This year will be 238-970. The difference there of 188 is debt service. So our thought process was, is that to provide free parking from, in effect, April 1 through Labor Day, but end of, end of September, for lack of a better descriptor. So that way it'll get us through the summer with no parking, no, with parking, but no fee for parking to try and encourage people to come downtown. Once again, placeholder, but that's where we sort of left that off at. On balance, like I said, I mean, we were super fired up about front porch and it was, we've been socking away money for several years and we were always getting the stink eye from everybody. What are you gonna spend the money on? What are you gonna spend the money on? Well, this was an awesome project and we still are going to do that. I am fully convinced of it. It's just not gonna be this year. So we will, we will revisit that. But like I said, for us right now, it's, we just don't know what we don't know, but we wanted to get something in front of you guys, just so you had some numbers to sort of work with. You know, it's, it's our intent to do everything we possibly can to help out the businesses within our power. You know, the keys, and you guys know how, you know, Christie and her team roll, but you know, we wanna do everything we can. Helping folks transition back to the new normal is gonna be. There's no book. I'm trying to find a book for this for someplace and I'm unable to find this book anywhere. So we're writing it as we go along, which is both exciting and super scary at the same time. But we're just trying to do everything we possibly can to, to help, help out our businesses in downtown. So you know, there's tons of limits to, we're limited by what the government will allow us to do, but we have to plan for this sort of phased approach that it seems to be forthcoming. And we're getting some good indications from Texas and I just saw Ohio just came out with, with their stuff, not half hour ago, 45 minutes ago, as to how they're gonna go. So it looks like it's gonna be occupancy related. But I think our thought was, is that people are gonna wanna be outside in the fresh air and, you know, trying to, so we're, that's sort of our thought process. You know, in how we sort of come out when we, I jokingly refer to it as rolling the stone away from the front of the cave, but you know, we're, we're there, we're getting close to it and, and people, you know, it's getting warmer out and people are, you know, I can tell by the folks walking through the neighborhood, everybody's scared, everybody's, you know, rightly so. But they're also, you know, looking forward to getting their lives back. So we wanna do everything we possibly can to help them do that. So with that, I'll, if there's any budget questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Eight and a half to nine times out of 10, my answer is gonna be, I don't know. But.
Nancy, you have a question?
Yes, I do. It's probably more for Anthony. So Ben, you spoke to the revenues and the fact that we really just don't know and I can appreciate that. But I was surprised to see that they're 10% higher from the taxes. And Anthony, is there any color around that? Why we would expect them to be 10% higher?
Absolutely. So the bulk of the DDA's revenue is from taxes and we had a jump over the prior year with some additional capture that wasn't in the original amounts for some finished commercial development properties that were finished being built. So the amounts that you're seeing in there are representative of those projects being completed and are now on the tax roll for the current year.
And then Nancy, too, on the next column over, if you look at the 2019 through 2020 activity through 331, that delta is only about little over 2%. So once that, those new properties came online, so the actual increase is not really much. It's related to new development coming up. Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
The questions?
Yeah, I got my hand up, Mayor.
Council member Albrecht.
Yeah. Hey, Ben, good presentation and there's probably more for Anthony. I'm looking at the, the sheet and I was looking at streetlight replacement. I saw 250 is in white and then underneath it is 153. And in your presentation, you said 153 was the budget for this year, correct?
Yeah, I think so. Anthony, walk me through that. Can't remember what we did there. There was a stick, stick and move. Our, our discussion point was, is we're gonna try and spend as much as we can. But don't know what that looks like yet, but.
I'm just not sure if I should be looking at the numbers in the white or the numbers in the powder blue.
Defer to Anthony. I like the up cam, Anthony. That's a good shot of you.
I don't have a camera on the computer when I'm using the monitors. So I have to use my phone to get the camera and then I got.
Got it.
Kind of like jumping, it's just kind of laying there on the, on the desk there. So the blue, powder blue, those are the notes that we, you know, it's time to kind of time, things come up. We have the G and L sessions and we put the, the notes in. If we have the discussion points, like during the meetings, I'll type into, and that's where the white part comes in. I'll type in the numbers as we're having the discussions. So there may be like a minor discrepancy, I think. And, and Ben was right on, we were talking about, okay. You know, 153 was a normal year, but wait, do we wanna do the 250 like we have been doing to get the streetlights as much done as possible? So I had the 250 in the white and then the notes for the, the blue was the 153.
Same question, Anthony. If you go to the front porch project at the next page, the blue has 255, but the white doesn't have anything. So I might assume there's nothing being set aside for the budget year for the front porch project.
That's correct.
Correct. And that was through the, the discussions too. So that 255 was going to be the original amount that would have been in there when we're doing the initial budget back in Janu, February. And obviously at the meeting, when we had the discussions, it was, yeah, that, that needs to be dropped down. So then just overwritten it down to zero.
Okay, so the streetlight and replacement, then will, that blue will really become, or the white will really become 153, not the 250 that we saw in our packet.
Yeah, because you're right now, you're running a deficit actually based on that, right? And the, the monies that we set aside for front porch this year, the 250 really is going to pay for the PSD assessment. So.
I think he's talking about the streetlights.
I'm talking about the streetlight, the streetlight.
Well, no, but it's sort of, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's $100,000 change, basically.
Right.
Correct.
I was just trying to match the sheet up to what you were saying, Ben. I was making notes here and looking at the sheet. Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we don't, you know, once this sort of all flushes out, I, I fully expect we'll have, you know, amendments, the de jour, like every, every, every month or two will be an amendment coming forth. Yeah, as soon as the realities start to reveal themselves. But the bottom line was, is whether we took it from capital this year or we took it from funds that we've set aside for capital, it's all coming out of the same pocket. So it's sort of irrelevant. The, the goals for the DDA for the year were to provide as much relief for the business owners that we possibly could to get them through this unique and unprecedented, you know, trying times. And we don't have a whole lot of tools at our disposal, but the three tools that we have are parking, you know, help with the PSD assessment and then the world's best marketing arm that happens to be, you know, housed on, on Main Street and has their ear to the sidewalk, so to speak. And with that sidewalk here, ear, I will TO it to Christie unless you guys, anybody else who got any other questions?
Council member Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Ben.
Hey, hey, good to see you.
Good to see you. So back on the, what would it take to actually do the remainder of Main Street on, on the, the lighting? Is it, would it have been contained in the 250 or no?
Well, sorry, Christie, go ahead.
Oh, we still have another about 1.2 million in streetlights that we need to buy, although Main Street itself, we finished this year. They're hook and bells that are still remaining. Those are in process and should be arriving in the next four to six weeks or so. They're delayed because of, you know, the shutdown. But they'll still be in this year.
Okay. So also, Ben, could you walk me back through the transfer of the auto parking fund? You mentioned April through September. So those are to cover fees, maintenance?
So the debt service is about 69,000 a month, Anthony, or 62? What is it? I forget.
63,000 per month.
63. Okay. So I was gonna split the difference. So what we did was we transferred from our capital to the parking fund, three months. So, because you guys had stopped parking fees effective April 1, but we still have bills to pay and there's still, you know, loan payments that are due. So the thought process was, is all right, well, let's make the parking fund hole for the, for the debt service for April, May and June. So that way we can have free parking through June 30th. And then in this budget, we've taken, in effect, July, August, September, to getting us through to Labor Day for free parking to try and sort of help, you know, encourage people to come downtown at, whenever they're, whenever.
That covers all, I mean, debt service, maintenance, everything, loss revenue?
Yep, it's, no, just.
Yeah. Break that, so break that down. Cause I, I mean, there, there's no notes here. So what does it come down to? How do you break it out? Debt service, loss of revenue, maintenance?
Well, I'm sorry. So a couple of things. The, our first cut at this, I asked Anthony, all right, well, how much is the parking fund taking on a weekly basis? And why don't we just kick that in? It would have bankrupted the DDA in about, I don't know, it was like 20 or six or $27,000 a week. It just was not, not, there's no way we could do that. The, the parking fund does have money set aside for capital and improvements and it's gonna have a six month hold on it. Now, we may come to find out at the end of June that people are all of a sudden are coming downtown and you guys are gonna say, you know what? Let's go ahead and start charging for parking in certain areas. I'm just, you know, spitballing, but that could happen, right? But for the DDA to take its entire budget and put it towards kicking it over to the parking fund would have, in effect, bankrupt. I mean, it, it would have taken away all the funds for the year. So there's no way we could have done it. So once that was determined, I'm like, all right, well, what are the hard costs that we have to cover that are not being paid for now? And the big one was the debt service.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, are you finished?
No, I just said, well, maybe I'll have to ask a follow up, but I guess my, since I haven't been on in a few years, was the last budget cycle that it incorporate 10 percent increase in supervisor salaries. Is that just standard each year, every year for the DDA or?
Go ahead.
I don't, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, no, actually I might be kicking a mark for this one since he was the chairman at the time, if that's okay.
That, that was a one time, I'm not looking at the page, Steve. That was a one time salary correction that we did in two equal years working with Blaine.
Approved by the council.
Approved by the council.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
Yeah, I just had a follow up on the parking question. I knew this is more for, for Anthony. So how much is gonna come out of the general fund to supplement that, whatever that is, the 62,000 delta per, per, the, yeah, I guess it's 62,000. That's gonna be for us, correct? Cause it is 125 total?
Correct. Yep. It's right around 125,000 per month. Essentially, it's almost split exactly in half from debt service to everything else. And the everything else is the maintenance and capital and operations and repairs and, and all of those items. So that, that other 62 and some change, $1,000 is currently a deficit for the rest, the rest of this year through June 30th of about $179,000.
So can, can I ask real quick, just, I'm sorry Dean, but I think this is sort of germane. So as you're going through this calculation process, Anthony, how much, because that assumes that we've got, you know, gates down and all this other stuff that's gonna be going on to maintain those parking decks to keep meters working and everything else, but none of that is going on right now. So I guess what is the bare absolute minimum of just the maintenance, ongoing maintenance? There's no snow removal because we're done with winter. You know, I, I don't know whatever else. If there's capital improvements, the, the parking advisory, the parking fund has already got money set aside for those. So to my mind, what you're gonna be out, stripping everything else out because there's no enforcement, there's no, you know, cross tracks, the PD, all that other stuff doesn't matter because there's no, there's nothing to enforce, right? So.
Well, you still have to pay the enforcement officers, though. They're not, they're not being laid off, are they?
Right. But if they're not working in the parking fund, not doing any activities in the district, so what?
They'll still have to be paid out of the general fund, though.
Uh, that's, that's possible. I, I don't know. But as, as a park, as.
They're gonna have to get paid.
Well, sure, but the parking fund is a separate distinct business unit on its own. And if it can't sustain, it's, you know, it's to have, if it's got employees doing nothing, I, I don't know what, what else to say. But I don't, you know, I, I thought we had viewed this as really stepping up and, and trying to help out in a really bad situation that no one asked before. But, you know, I think.
I guess it'd speak to kind of more of an overarching philosophical concern that I've had probably for a few years now is that, that ultimately the, the debt and the service and, and the, the liability of the parking structures falls upon the residents of Rochester for structures that primarily serve the needs of the businesses. Now, yes, I, I understand that there is some, some halo, you know, value increase in terms of our home values. But I don't know that it's to the degree of 50% in a situation like this. You're totally right. It is, it is our liability on the, on the, on the municipal side. So I get it, but I, I just disagree with it. And I guess you can't go back in time, but I, I would have liked to have seen that this would have been a DDA capital investment project back in the day, but it wasn't. So we have to do what we can from this point forward to make sure that the residents are, are, you know, paying in what they, in terms of the value that they get out of it, but not necessarily subsidizing it. So that's my concern.
Any further comments? On the DDA budget? Okay, I just, one, thank you, Ben. Just one comment. I, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson. Didn't see your hand there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. No, to that discussion regarding the parking fund, though, what I, I felt that at the DDA meeting, for them to come up with this plan to help the business owners and not by charging them and taking that money and applying it to the parking fund was one of the, a very smart thing to do. And I think that to Dean's point about the officers and things like that, I don't look at this as a burden as a resident that we are picking up these other costs. Because this is like, that is actually being picked up by all those business owners downtown normally with the, with the extra money that is usually collected too. So I think that in short term, this was the best thing that we could do. Long term, I don't want, I, I just kind of find it hard to discuss possibly, you know, not needing the ordinance officers downtown just because the parking structures aren't there. I think the police presence has been really good during this time as well. And whether or not they are checking the parking decks or checking meters, I think they're right now actually going above and beyond to protect us as well. So I think that everything that the DDA is doing at the moment, and you'll see here soon in the presentation, was a very, a lot of foresight went into that. And I think that in the end, as you see more of it, you'll see that they have taken every step to make sure that they remain whole, the businesses remain whole and the city is not having to pick everything up. But also I thought we had maintenance money in the DPW as well for the maintenance of the parking decks. Thank you, Mayor.
Blaine, do we have that?
Let me unmute. The, the parking structure actually is its own enterprise fund. So there's dollars in there for, for maintenance. So you know, to Ben's point, Ben's point, there's not snow. However, it's our time to do the spring cleaning, which is normally, you know, hosing it out and kind of getting everything all, all, you know, all ready really for this next season, spring. There's a lot of debris and other stuff that's, that's in there. And actually during our last staff meeting, we've, we've been talking about when can we schedule that sort of cleaning to occur? And now is actually a better time because of the, the lack of vehicles in there compared to when, when it's a little bit more challenging, when there are a lot of cars and trucks in there.
Ben, I almost said council member Ben.
Not anymore. So to that point, Blaine, if you guys. Not anymore. Uh, so, uh, to that point, Blaine, if you guys, and, and I get it, we want to work with, we want to work with the city, we want to work with you guys, we want to, you know, the three legged stool, the four legged table, whatever we are, um, uh, that we've always referred to ourselves at, but it's all part of the team, and we're on the team. So if, if, um, you know, there needs to be money set aside for this, uh, spring cleaning, for lack of a better term, I'm happy to run down my power washer if you guys need some help, but, um, uh, if you want to put together a, a budget of what the cross charge might be for that, and we can take a look at that, and then if, if we can find, uh, you know, some more, uh, lift up some more rocks in the, in the twenty twenty budget, and if I can, uh, uh, have present, present it to the board and see if they want to go ahead and fund that, we'd, we'd be happy to take a look at that, too. I understand, um, I, we want to be helpful, we want to be part of the solution, and I think it's important that, um, you know, uh, we, we do our part and we're committed to that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ben, you mentioned there, there are possibly some amendments to this presentation. When do you think we might see those or?
Uh, Mayor, I can take that.
Sorry, sorry. Just being honest, I have no idea.
If you, uh, if you fast forward in your packet down to the quarterly report, that's where the amendments are that, uh, Ben is speaking of as well as a whole bunch of other ones. So a little bit, there's a lot of stuff that we're talking, even the parking fund report and all that, that's, those are all items that are on the agenda tonight, or just, uh, in a different order.
Got it. Sorry about that. Yeah, I didn't. So now that I'm not a council, I didn't bother looking through the whole agenda. I just looked at what I had to be responsible for, and then I'm just going to leave you fine people to your devices, because my, the downside of my home office is our dining room, and it's right next to the kitchen. And my, my wife made an awesome meatloaf, and that's all I can store right now. So, uh, but I digress. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Salvia, did you have?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay. Anything further? Uh, Mayor Protem Bavaku?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, kind of one last time, put my, uh, my perspective out there. You guys can take it for what it's worth, but, um, the, the way that I see this is, you know, we've got, uh, the DDA supplementing the marketing budget of the, uh, the businesses, which is, which I understand. I mean, it's a, it's a smart thing to do. They're going to need some help. Um, you know, from my perspective as a councilperson, we're not necessarily stepping up and subsidizing the water bills for our residents at this point. Um, while at the same time, the residence general fund is going to have to support, um, the, the debt or the liability that the parking structures, um, are incurring. Um, so uh, uh, above and beyond that, you've got the funds that have been put aside for a nice to have project, which I think is a cool project. But, you know, we're in a, I think we can call it essentially a time of crisis here financially. We don't, we don't know what's going to be happening on, on our side of things in terms of, um, our revenue, you know, the, the responsibilities we're going to have, the responsibilities we're going to have and not be able to necessarily meet. And at the same time, we're going to have to cover off the costs of, uh, um, ongoing maintenance for the parking structures. And I get it, it's all tough stuff, but I just want that perspective out there. Thank you.
Anything further? Yeah, I did, I'd just like to make a comment that, um, I appreciate the DD, I mean, I'm on the, I, I always want to say the DDA, I'm on the DDA board, of course. Um, you know, you know, accepting the fact that we don't know what's going to happen. So, I mean, I think we all, we all get that. Um, you know, one of the comments I make is, I, I saw is, you know, I was thinking about that today is that, you know, I know that the ten percent increase in pay was agreed upon before, but, you know, if things are as bad as we might think they are, that, that's not a very good look, I don't think. So, I mean, I think we need to reconsider that. Uh, you know, if in three months everything's fine, well, then that's different. But if, you know, there's twenty percent of people out of work, and we're given ten percent raises, uh, that's, that to me is, uh, problematic. So I just think that's something to consider. Um, you know, we're, we, we haven't gone forward with some of the raises for the city employees as well. Um, so I think we just need to be mindful that I know in, in talking with most people, everybody is aware of that. Um, but that's just something going forward to, to consider. Um, again, everything that was agreed upon in the past is now, seems like a lifetime ago, right? So. Anything further? Uh, Councilmember Peterson, you had your hand up? You need to unmute?
I, I'm all, I'm all set, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not going to continue, but that's fine. Thanks.
Okay.
All right, I guess it's.
Thank you, Ben.
You got it. I think Christie's up, so now I will turn it over to our, uh, director and have her, uh, give you the presentation that we went through a few weeks ago.
All right, Christie.
Great, thanks, Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so give me one minute here to get this up for you. And one second here. And there we go. Alrighty, this is the presentation that we gave at DDA. We've made a few modifications because, as Ben mentioned, we're kind of doing everything on the fly and things seem to keep moving rather quickly. So we made a few modifications. So for anyone who saw it, uh, two weeks ago, you'll notice a few minor changes. Uh, we're calling it the Road to Recovery. Um, we feel like this is a journey that we're going to be on for quite some time, and so we thought this was apropos. Um, we've broken it down into three phases, and that's what we want to go through with you tonight. Uh, the first phase is crisis management, which is exactly what we're doing right now, and we're going to detail exactly what the team has been doing thus far to support the business district and the community. Phase two is embracing the new normal. What are we going to do once things can reopen, and what is that going to look like? And then phase three, the long-term downtown and community stabilization, what does that picture look like? And what ways are we going to use to try and get that to move forward? So, having said that, um, anyone who's heard about our front porch project, not the physical front porch, but the actual metaphorical front porch that we've been using for many of our projects that we've been doing, like the French porch stories, uh, the picnic and pies last year, things like that. Um, it has four pillars, the wellness, community, people in place. And I believe I did this presentation for council sometime last, in the last eighteen months or so. And what I found is when we were developing our Road to Recovery program, it seemed to still hit on these four areas, wellness, community, people in place. And I think you'll see that as we go forward in the presentation. Um, Ben Muldro, who is one of the greatest Main Street minds in the country, I happened to be on the phone with him last week, and he said something that I thought was really interesting. We can't Main Street our way out of this one. What that means is that the usual philosophy, when there is something, some type of crisis down on Main Street, is that we identify the crisis, give everything that we can to try and make sure that we, um, educate everyone about it. We get them through it, and at the end, we throw a big party. We can't Main Street our way out of this one. This is a completely different situation. We can't do what we've always done. And this presentation is really reflective of that fact that we can't do what we've always done, so we're going to be doing things a bit differently. So let's talk about what we know and what we don't know. So for what we know, we know that we have businesses at risk. We've already had one business elect to close. Uh, we know that they had already been talking about that prior to this, and this just tipped their decision in favor of sticking with just their online presence, which is robust. Consumer habits will change, and they have changed. Consumers have gotten used to certain things that they never thought they would get used to before. So we have to be able to react to those changes and see how we're going to be able to embrace this to bring people back downtown. Health and wellness are going to be at the forefront for many people. We talked about it already. Tonight, people are going to have trepidation about coming downtown, so we have to talk about safety, we have to talk about security. We have to make sure that people feel confident coming downtown, that they're coming to a safe environment where they feel comfortable. Um, local will be highly desirable. That's one benefit that we're going to have of all of this, is that people are not going to want to venture too far from home for a little while. And that's natural, and that's okay, but that's an opportunity for us as well, that if people would like to stay local, there's a lot of opportunity with what we have to offer as a community that we can engage that, the community, and keep them locally. And there's going to be new demand, online curbside and delivery services. A lot of our businesses never did things like that before, but they started doing them now. People have gotten used to it, and we feel that going in the future, they don't want to lose curbside. They don't want to lose the online shops that many of our retailers have set up. They like the idea of delivery, so we need to know what that looks like and how we might be able to leverage that to our benefit. And then, of course, we have, we, we don't know. And this is what Ben was alluding to when he talked about that we may have some amendments coming forward at a later date, because we may need to pivot again, once we know what the timing is and how long our businesses will remain closed. We don't have an official open for business date yet. Uh, I was watching the governor today. She said that there'll be something coming in the next week or two, but that isn't anything that's guaranteed to let us know that we will have a for sure open date, because there's a lot of factors that impact that. But once we do get an open for business date, that doesn't mean that downtown will be a hundred percent open, depending on what the businesses have done in this transition period, but we hit the pause button. Like restaurants, for instance, some still kept operating, some didn't. So you're going to have that supply chain of people preparing to get back up and running. Many of them had to lay off their employees, getting those employees back. Um, bigger businesses are going to be harder to be excited to get everybody back aboard, or smaller businesses that are one or two percent shops, they would be able to open rapidly. So we have to balance our excitement with getting every back open with our promotions. We don't want to spend money on promotions when only a percentage of our businesses were able to advantage them, because the rest have not been able to get open yet. Social distancing restrictions, we're confident that that is unfortunately going to be in existence for a while, and what does that look like? And how do we embrace that downtown? Gathering restrictions, right now, we can't hold any events downtown with the current legis, with the current orders from the governor. We know that's going to change. But what is that going to look like? And also, what are people going to be comfortable with? So even if we do have full reign to do what we usually do, will we? Because is that really what our community wants? Is that what they're comfortable with? And then, of course, we know there are going to be required safety measures. I'm already hearing from different businesses, changes that they're already making on their own, but I'm sure that there will be requirements moving forward for people, and we need to be able to react to those and help our businesses react to those as well. So our Road to Recovery, our phase one is our crisis management, and that's what we're working on right now. So when all of this happened, it happened rather quickly, especially when the restaurants had to go to fifty percent capacity to then carry out only, and then our retail, our non-essential retail had to be shut down, our spas had to be shut down, everything, it just came in waves, and then it was done. So we had to figure out a way that we could really engage with everybody. We had a few choices to make, and a lot of downtowns have made choices that I wouldn't have made. A lot of them are posting these videos of their empty streets and of showing that we'll be back, we will survive downtown strong. I, I get those messages. I a hundred percent do, but I thought we could do something better. Love Local Rochester is something that we had in our back pocket. That was something we were actually planning on rolling out either this summer or fall as a campaign that we are working on, but we felt like maybe this was the right time. Of course, we wanted to support the local businesses, say shop local, but it just seems like at times when people are not confident about their personal safety, trying to launch a shop local campaign just seemed hollow to me. And it just seemed disingenuous, because that really wasn't what we were trying to do. Um, Love Local was really focused on that we love our community, and that's not just the downtown. That's not about businesses. It's not about making money. It's about people. And everything that you're going to hear in this presentation, we talk about is about people. Um, Love Local, we launched it just as a quick little logo that I had put together. Then the executive committee had given me a little pocket money to go ahead and actually make it a real thing, that a real designer did, and cleaned it up, put it out there. So many people just really just latched on to it, because it's positive, it's happy. And it symbolizes what a lot of people feel in their heart about our community. And so Love Local was born. There's a Love Local Rochester group page that, um, our businesses can post on, and we left it specifically Rochester, not just downtown. So even from the greater community can post there, too. It's a great place that we've been able to engage with our community, communicate and tell them things that are going on with our businesses and beyond. Within that page, we've also launched some daily, um, different promotions that we've been doing with the businesses. Again, everything had to move virtual, and so we needed to pivot rather quickly. It all started with the Great American Takeout, which was something that was put on by the National Restaurant Association. That was one of the first events out of the chute when everything shut down. Our businesses, our restaurants specifically, really liked the Takeout Tuesday concept, so we decided to continue that. But based on the success of that, with the traction that we got on social media, we started doing other days. So we have Takeout Tuesday, then we have Workout Wednesday that focuses on all of the places that are, our gym and fitness and personal trainers, Pilates, yoga. Uh, we've actually had Kuma doing some brain teaser things with us on Workout Wednesday, just some really fun stuff. Uh, thirty dollars on Thursday, asking people to spend thirty dollars at a downtown business, post a copy of their receipt, and they're entered to win a downtown gift certificate. Flash Sale Friday, where we create a webpage for our businesses, and they're able to host a different deal every Friday, and then we share that out throughout the day. Uh, Saturday, we do Self-Care Saturday, focusing on the salon, spas, anything that's wellness related. Uh, for instance, coming up this Saturday, um, Rochester dentistry, uh, Dr. Dolan and Dr. Hadad are going to be featured. So it's always something just taking care of yourself. And then Sunday, we have Sunday Fun Day, which, uh, we partnered with Pinker Center of the Arts. They do a live art activity every Sunday, and then we have other fun promotions that we've been doing. So while we've been doing things like this for the businesses, we've also been spending equal time working on things for our community. Uh, you may have seen some of these, both on the Downtown Rochester Facebook page, as well as the Love Local page. Um, asking people to chalk, post photos. Chalk the Walk was a really fun one. A lot of people at home have been doing a lot of great chalk artworks. We wanted to feature that. Again, people were entered into a drawing to win a gift certificate for that, but to see the photos brightening up our feed with all the chalk art was pretty fun. Um, Rainbows Over Rochester, that's one we just finished, where, um, rainbows over concept has been all over the country. There's a rainbows over Michigan, so we decided to do a hyper local version. Um, we're going to be producing a video featuring all of the photos that came in from that, and it was really heartwarming. But again, everything that we're doing is trying to lift up. We all know that things are not great. We get it, but we don't need to be leading with that. People already know that. So why can't we be an escape? Were their community hub? We like to think that downtown is the heart of the community. People say it, so we need to live that, and we need to embrace that. But moving forward, we're going to be doing, to do a lot more than that, if we want to preserve the downtown that we know and love, and if we want to support and continue to serve our community, which leads us to phase two, embracing the new normal. So, um, Jenna and Taylor from my office are on the call with us, and so to start with embracing the new normal, I'm going to turn things over to Jenna Odell to kick us off. Jen?
Cool. Thanks, Christie. So embracing the new normal, um, as Christie mentioned, uh, we won't be able to jump into a, a large event, and we'll have to ease our community back into what is a new normal. Um, so events and promotions, a few promotions that we've already rolled out that Christie had mentioned. Um, we want to continue with these daily promotions. We found that Takeout Tuesday and Flash Sale Friday seem to be successful and effective, and we, um, had great responses from both merchants and patrons. So we would, we would like to continue these daily promotions in the next coming weeks. Um, and we're also willing to create a new daily promotions as things evolve to bring people to, to town and to keep our, um, community engaged. The, um, next promotion would be our monthly event guide. Uh, we talked internally about creating a, a monthly event guide that we will include our upcoming events and promotions, and we'll also be able to include, um, any businesses that are doing, uh, events and promotions. Um, and then we would have, we would distribute them to mer, to merchants, so patrons would have something tangible to take home with them and know exactly what's happening in town. The, um, the cool thing about having the month, the monthly event guide is that we'll be able to post it on our website and social media pages, so viewers and followers can see what's happening in town, um, as well from their home. Uh, the next one is Happy Thoughts. We rolled Happy Thoughts out last year at sidewalk sales, and the purpose of Happy Thoughts is to surprise and delight, have a surprise and delight effect on our community. So temporarily, we placed large stickers with warm fuzzy feelings, like the one you see here on the screen. Um, some said smile, the other said, don't forget to be awesome, spread love, things like that. So as people found these stickers around town, they ended up taking photos of them and posting them, um, on their social media pages. So just having them up for three days at sidewalk sales was great, but we're hoping to roll this out for a whole month. Um, we'll post a few on social media, and it might be a really great initiative welcoming people back to our town. Uh, the, another event we hope to roll out when the time is right is the Love Local Block Party. Uh, the Love Local Block Party would consist of food, entertainment, music from local artists, and of course, shopping. We want to continue to welcome back our community in a warm, fuzzy way and celebrate our merchants, our town, and celebrate being, being back. And then the wel, the Welcome Home Campaign, um, I keep saying warm and fuzzy because it's the feeling we want to convey to the community, so we all remember why we love Rochester. Uh, we all heard and we know that Rochester feels like home to many people, so with the Welcome Home Campaign, uh, we would, we're looking to roll out images of iconic people such as the La Pumas you see here. They've been in our town for fifty, going on fifty-one years, um, with the Love Local logo on it, um, welcoming everyone back to Rochester. And a cool thing with this campaign, we can post it on our, um, social media pages, website, and then include it in our, um, In-Town Magazine as well.
And speaking of that, I think, are we going to transition to Taylor now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I'd just like to preface this by saying I only have access to so many photos at my homes, so here we go.
Thanks.
Go ahead, say.
Um, yeah, so as, um, Jenna was mentioning, we're working on some new material with our In-Town Magazine. I'm sure all of you are familiar with In-Town. It is our, uh, publication that we produce twice a year, goes out to the Rochester, Rochester Hills and Greater Rochester area, forty-three thousand homes. Um, what, uh, summer issue as well as a holiday issue. And for our, um, summer issue, we typically have a print deadline of about, uh, mid-March, uh, as all of you may recall, a few weeks ago. mid-March, as all of you may recall, a few weeks ago, that happened to intersect with our first stay-at-home order that was instructed by Governor Whitmer. And so at that time, we kind of reflected on what we wanted to do and decided to hit the pause button on going to print with In Town. In the publication, there's lots of specific event dates and material that are kind of time sensitive. So we didn't want to print anything that might be inaccurate. You know, especially with not knowing what was coming in the forward days and weeks. Which I think we're happy to say that that was a great choice at the time, being that this is ballooned into something that we never would have imagined. But, you know, taking lemons and making lemonade, we feel that this is a great opportunity to you know, really tackle the COVID nineteen situation in relation to downtown Rochester. So taking the time to add some additional content or adjust content that we have in our magazine and focus it on our community members, as Christy touched on, and our businesses. Some of the, you know, content would be highlighting that Welcome Home Campaign that Jen just highlighted with the La Pumas and some other pillars in the community. Hopefully using the magazine as a great vehicle to market different promotions that we're looking to add to our calendar as well as hopefully a Love Local Festival and campaign as it grows in the coming weeks and days. But I think most important that we'd like to add to the magazine are human interest stories. This has clearly been a very challenging time for people in many different ways. And so to you know, shed some positivity into the community, we'd like to highlight those things like the Chalk the Walk Campaign or Rainbows Over Rochester, really vibrant visuals with positive messages, ways to show that our community has stayed busy and positive during this time and that we can overcome this. In addition to our community members, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't really highlight a lot of our businesses. I think that they've done a really great job in navigating this uncharted territory. Many are, have amplified their online presence with, like Christy touched on, online shopping, curbside pickups, deliveries, as well as our restaurants. And so for them to stay strong and hopefully try as best as possible to overcome this situation, I think is something that we really need to recognize and hopefully continues to support our small businesses in Rochester. Something else that Christy had touched on that was so important and something that we're continually threading throughout our artwork at the DDA is a health and wellness pillar. Thankfully for us, we have a really great established venue that is our annual farmer's market. For everyone that's familiar, you know, this is something that takes place every Saturday, May through October. You know, we see about two thousand attendees each market day, and so it's a great community gathering space. In Christy's previous Front Porch project presentation, we had talked about some initiatives in relation to the farmer's market. And one in particular that has really stuck with us is something that is known as the Power of Produce Club or more known as Pop Club. For anyone that might not be familiar, it's a children's activity program that originated in Oregon City, Oregon back in twenty-eleven. At, in their market in Oregon City, it had become so well-known and had grown. It has since been adopted by a national organization, the Farmer's Market Coalition. But what Pop aims to do is empower children ages six through twelve to make healthy food choices by attending educational activities, cooking demonstrations. In return, providing children with market currency to spend on fruits, vegetables, herbs and plants. So really reinforcing the importance in making healthy food decisions for years to come. We like Pop Club because it's a very mission-driven program. So activities are set at certain dates and times, which would create families to be very mission-driven to come to the market. We see the market as a great venue because we know that consumer habits will change post COVID. And so with its open air layout and spread out nature, this might be a really great way of customers kind of re-engaging into back to normal life and their normal habits or testing the waters and what they might feel comfortable with. Beyond children's activities, we've, as Jen mentioned, had a lot of success with our Workout Wednesdays, which has been an online feature of our social media pages, but we think that would be something great to feature in person at the market. You know, maybe fitness hasn't been a focus during this quarantine time, but it might be, you know, good to get back on the saddle for our community. Once again, by nature, we have an open air market, spread out layout. So it'd be kind of a great way for people to grab a neighbor and head down to get their workout in on a Saturday. As well, this would be great for our, you know, our fitness studios here in downtown Rochester. You know, maybe they haven't been kind of front and center during this time or the focus of a lot of people's attention. And so for them to be out in the community engaging with maybe returning customers or new customers is something that we really want to make sure to offer to them. And another concept that we had come across from a market in another state was Appreciation Days. And we think this is awesome and very important to do, especially in this time. We know that nurses, first responders and teachers have been working tirelessly and selfishly or selfishly. You know, over the last days and weeks. And so we want to, as a community, be able to say thanks to those individuals by having Appreciation Days for them. You know, we don't know exactly what this would look like yet, but finding ways to give them a token of their thanks, kind of call out attention to the hard work that they've done, providing for us as a community. With all of this in mind, we do know that, like Christy said, we don't know what the governor's orders will be and how we will phase out of this situation, but we've talked internally that the farmer's market is a huge component of our event calendar and one that we we've decided that we want to work towards making work in whatever the coming days look like. So we are working right now with Chief Shattenhelm and Chief Seeslick and other Mifmaw organization which oversees farmer's markets and staying in tune with what we will need to do to make the farmer's market work. We very much acknowledge that we'll have to go through certain protocols of safety and distant things. So you know, the market will evolve and maybe how it looks initially, but hopefully, like I said, it is a great opportunity for the community to get back out there. In addition to our normal Saturday market, market may be evolving in the coming weeks, there has been discussion within the DDA to expand our market, maybe in different days or different venues. We do believe that the outdoor setting is a great way to have your community come out and support your the businesses that you love, the restaurants that you love, or the vendors that you have grown to appreciate. And so we see this as a great opportunity to expand on at this time.
Awesome. Great. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Taylor. So having said all of that, now we need to talk about our true road to recovery, about stabilizing our community and our businesses. So starting with phase three, I want to take you in the Wayback Machine for a minute to the Main Street Makeover, which was in two thousand twelve. I'm sure everybody remembers this very vividly. Main Street Makeover was a time when people said to us, you know, we don't know what we're going to do. We don't know what's going to happen. And but we were able to see our community through that. Now with what we're going through right now, a lot of businesses and people in the community have come back and said, hey, Main Street Makeover, do what you did that year. Great. Except, Main Street Makeover is not something that we can just redo. Main Street Makeover is something that we had eighteen months notice to get our businesses up and ready to go. We don't have that luxury right now. People weren't avoiding our downtown just because they couldn't get out of their houses. They were avoiding downtown because they were annoyed about construction, a completely different narrative. That's not what we're dealing with now. But as I looked back into our Main Street Makeover playbook, I found a few things that I thought might be useful for us. I'm sure I put them out for this. During Main Street Makeover, both Nick and I had dedicated our summer to just working on Main Street Makeover. That's all we did the whole summer is bird dog that project from when we started at the end of March to when the construction was concluded the week before line up. And that timeline's very important. And I had kind of forgotten that over time of what the makeover looks like is that we really did put first shovel in the ground at the end of March and then we took that all the way up until construction the week before line up. And that's important. So with Nick and I dedicating our time, that really helped the businesses. We knew that they were going to be focusing on that time period and that they needed to know who they were going to be talking to. They needed to know that there was somebody they could trust. There had been some discussion about hiring an ombudsman. We felt like that was going to be a waste of resources because people were going to call us anyway because they're familiar with us and they know us. So having a dedicated staff person or two that's going to be shepherding them through what's coming next, we think is going to be something that's very important. In addition to that, we also looked at one of the other things that we felt was a great success from our project was our field office. I don't know if everyone remembers that. But we actually made it a condition of the contract that people, that whoever took the contract, you know, was awarded that from MDOT, that they actually had to lease a space downtown that we come a field office. So at any given time, a business owner or a business employee or someone from the community could walk into the space and they would find someone that was from MDOT or from the city or from the construction company or one of the inspectors or one of the DDA people that they could ask questions. We had a space where people could see the artifacts of what was found in the street. That space paid dividends over and over again. And it's actually a model that they've started using in some of their other communities as well. So we looked at that and said, how else can we do something with that? So taking that knowledge of the Main Street Makeover, what we talked about and knowing that we've never done this before. So in that way, we can't do anything we've ever done before because we need to look at things differently. We can't throw that big party. We have to look at this in a different way. Which is why the DDA is proposing that we would like to open the Downtown Collaboration Studio. This would be a space that we would rent in a vacant property on Main Street. It's a place to reinvent and reconnect for our community. I'm going to walk you through exactly what we're envisioning this space to be and how we would propose funding it. So I want you to look at this with two lenses, both from the merchant perspective and the community perspective because it's serving both masters. Starting with the merchants, this would be a place that we could have guru chats and business workshops, B two B events, monthly roundtables, table talks. It's an open door. And I'm going to come back to, there's a reason why there's a table in this picture and I'm going to come back to that in a minute. For the community, it would be a community resource. It would be a place that people could come and find out what's going on to engage with us. There would be pop-up events that we could be doing there for either the merchants or maybe even some prospective businesses. Merchant marketing opportunities. I've already talked with Paint a Miracle that they would like to do an exhibition. Would this move forward for the very first month that we're open? So they'd be putting their student artwork up on our walls. Love Local Rochester merchandise. I don't know if anyone's noticed, the Love Local Protective Mask fundraiser that we launched on Friday, we've already sold over a thousand masks in three days. People love the brand. They want to support downtown. I think that's another way through fundraising that we can help pay for some of these extra efforts that we want to do. Inspiring connections. If we've learned anything from what's happening with COVID nineteen right now is that people are hungry for those connections. Zoom can only get us so far. People are still hungry for those personal connections and we need to give them a place that they can feel comfortable coming and making those connections happen, both with the community and also with the businesses. I've already been talking to several salons today that are trying to source some of the protective materials that they're going to need. I happened to find one that had a great source, connected it with a couple others. So that sharing of resources is going to become really important because it's going to take a village to get us through that. And I'm trying to continue to build a hub for that village and then breaking that fourth wall. That's what we've been calling it. A lot of people like to, you know, peek behind the curtain like with the Wizard of Oz and see what we're doing. We think it'd be kind of cool for people to see the behind the scenes of what it takes to put on deck art, what it takes to get Rochester Pose ready to go. For Festival of Trees, we build abundance of those trees at the second floor of my office. What if we built those downstairs so people could come in and see them and get a sneak preview? It's that excitement, it's that engagement, it's doing things we've never done before, that I think is going to make the difference for our businesses. This table is here for a reason. Bob Bloomingdale is actually fashioning a table for us right now out of material made from Rochester salvage, which is all salvage material from Rochester Homes. This table would be the centerpiece of the studio. It's a place that people can come in, they can talk with us, that they know we're always going to be there, coffee's always on and they can talk with us. Pretty much between myself, Jenna and Taylor, we're working twenty-four seven right now. There is no nine to five, not that there ever really was with us. But people are finding us and they're just, they want to know they have access to us. They have little questions. They just want to talk. That's good. And that's fine. And we want to keep that up. We started a downtown merchant Facebook page as a closed group page where merchants could just share and talk and vent and whatever. And it has been a remarkable thing that we created because people have, we formed, even though we are a community, we formed even a closer community so that we've been able to be with each other, hear what's going on. And that's what is going to need to happen. Because once we get the green light that we can re-engage, we are going to be out there with the businesses to find out what is going on. We need to know who's in trouble, who needs to be stabilized, how we can help. I will tell you for a fact, and I'm sure that Nick could back me up on this. As the statistics go, they always say it's less expensive to keep a customer that you already have than it is to go find a new one. I can tell you that it's going to be a lot harder to go find a new business in this new normal of whatever that looks like than it is to try and solidify and keep one of our existing businesses. Not to mention that our small businesses, they're part of the fabric of our community. And for everyone that we lose, we lose a piece of that. And it's our commitment that we don't want to do that. So I put a lot out there, but the question is, okay, great idea. How are you going to pay for it? Well, here's how it's going to work. So it's going to be managed and staffed by the DDA team and volunteers. So there's not any extra staff time that's being asked to be paid for out of this. This is all, we're just going to be reallocating, just like during Main Street Makeover, we're all reallocating our time to do things differently and to maximize our time because that's what we do. Main Street Oakland County, they provide funding for us on an annual basis because we are one of two senior level communities with them. This year, we are going to be spending it on the, the DDA board had already approved to send Jen and I to the Disney Institute for training and also that we, by merchant request, we are going to be bringing in a window display designer that was going to work with the merchants and do some seminars this summer. We have since canceled both of those things and we're going to be taking those funds and putting them forth into the downtown studio. In addition to that, with the money that we've already raised from the masks, we're selling them both to merchants at a discounted rate and then the ones to the public. Between that and what we've raised from Oakland County, we already have about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars right out of the gate, not including what the DDA has already committed that they want to help spend on this as well. We'll be doing daily, weekly and monthly programming there. Small things, big things, a lot of it depends on how many people can get into one place. But we're going to be onboarding people, just like we did virtually. We're going to be onboarding them to how they can set up an online shop. We're talking about taking a really big swing and looking at maybe a downtown delivery system. Figuring out what curbside looks like on an ongoing basis. But we're going to be talking to people every day and finding out what's going on. Our Business Development Committee is going to go door-to-door with a survey, talking to the businesses so we can figure out what their needs are, what they want, and then program that space around it. We have a lot of opportunity right now to continue the dialogue we've had with the merchants, the relationship and the comfort level they have with them. And it would be, would be remiss if we didn't capitalize on it because our downtown depends on it. We believe that with this space, we could be up and running by June first and then we would have that space from June first through the end of the year. We think in that time, we will be able to have that hands-on experience that our merchants are going to be desperately needing and that we're seeing every day right now in our emails and our Facebook messages and our texts and our phone calls. So I just want to leave you this one last thought and then we'll open up for questions. One of my favorite quotes is that there's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about. We know our community cares about our downtown and our downtown cares about our community. It takes a village. We're in this together and that's the only way that we're going to survive all of this is going to be together. And I think that the studio is something different and it's a little out there, but I think it's the big swing that we need to take if we want to keep our downtown. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor and I'll open for any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Congressman Peterson.
That's fine. I know it's a timing thing. Christy, thanks again. I enjoyed hearing this again from you and your team. And I do feel that, as I stated earlier, this was something that had a lot of foresight to find a new way to help really engage a group, a community of business owners who have had to endure something that was never planned, as you stated, some restaurants that didn't do curbside and things like that, which we learned at the DDA meeting and such. These are things that are very important. I think the collaborative workspace is something that could later be turned into even something even greater that the community has, I've always felt the community has needed. And it's kind of like that welcome center, that place where people can go and learn and get in touch with some, a real person instead of just a phone call. I think it's, you're right on, you'd be right on Main Street, you would be right in, right there for everybody. You would be right in, um, right there for everybody, um, to reach out and, uh, find that there's a friendly face during a time like this. So, um, I think that the work, um, uh, and the sacrifices that you're doing now, uh, to find ways to fund something like this for the greater good is, um, really, really a great thing. And I think out of this, I think that, um, I actually think the role of the DDA will actually have an opportunity to expand and even become something more in the future. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Keith Lee.
Christie, great presentation. I really enjoyed it. I think that you and your team are doing excellent work. This is such an unprecedented, unprecedented in time that we're living in. So to see you reacting so quickly and in such a positive way. I loved the Love Rochester, um, launch and I've had a lot of fun following you on Facebook. You've kept us all up to date with that. So thank you. This presentation was really informative. I do have a couple of questions, uh, some things that popped up. I'm wondering, do you, do you have the Main Street Oakland County funding already in the bank? Or is that something that could possibly be cut?
I don't understand. Oh, you mean, are, are, is the county going to cut it? No, no, they, that money is earmarked for us. It hasn't physically come to us. They won't cut it to us until May 1st. But that would be.
One of the concerns would be that, that things get cut from the county level and.
No.
Have that.
Yeah, no, that won't happen. That's our money and they're actually finding more money for the communities to do more things. They're actually working on, um, setting up a new crowdfunding campaign site as well that they're putting money into, but that money is ours to take. Um, so, and that, I, those are just some added things. The DDA has in their budget put forth money to fund the studio. So this is just another way that I was able to get creative and find a way that we could take then those dollars and spend them on different things within the studio as well. So it's all one big pot, um, but that is our money to have. I spoke with John Bry from Oakland County today and he had already confirmed all that. They just aren't releasing funds until next month because that's normally when all of our technical visit, um, assistance dollars would have to be requested by then.
That's good to have that reassurance. And then, um, when would you have to secure the space by? So if you're talking in June, um, some of the talks that, that I've heard is that we might be limited to groups, any sort of group activities to even 10 people. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that and we can only have 10 people in the collaborative workspace.
Yep, and that's okay because I mean, as you can see right now, we're doing a lot virtually. So it can be some things where we do some one-on-one trainings within the space just to begin with. And then the rest of it, we can do through Zoom. So I think there's a lot of ways that we can get creative with that. Um, to be open by June 1st, we would be looking to sign our lease, uh, next month. And that's something that we've already been talking with, um, our prospective landlord that we'd want to get in there, um, mid-May so we wouldn't be paying full rent for that first month just to be able to get us in. We're trying to, we're looking at a space that's pretty much move-in ready. We really wouldn't have to do much other than bring our stuff with us so we could react rather quickly and open in the space. But yes, depending on what gathering looks like, we'll just have to change up some of our programming so that the things that we would want larger groups in there, that we would program those a little bit later into our, our plan. But other than that, it doesn't take much to, you know, put on a pot of coffee and invite people in on a one-on-one basis to come see us.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Christie and, and Ben and Jen and Taylor. Um, a couple of questions and then I'll go into just a, a, an observation. Uh, how long are we doing, looking for the lease to be, Christie, and how much will it be per month?
Um, so what we're looking at right now is to be in there for, um, May 15th through the end of December. Um, and the rent per month we're looking at is 2,500 with May being 1250.
Okay. So this next thing is, I'm just going to, i- it's interesting and I, we haven't gotten even to the PSD, uh, budget yet. But when you think of PSD and, um, uh, DDA, DDA has always been about capital improvement and, you know, putting money into infrastructure and everything else. And PSD has been about promotions. And it's interesting in this topsy-turvy world we're in, we've sort of pivoted and, and, and sort of flipped that. Uh, and I commend, uh, Ben and the, uh, DDA board for taking what was, you know, capital money, the front porch project, a portion of the streetlight project to really support the businesses, which it really isn't a capital investment, but it is an investment in our downtown businesses. So an interesting, um, uh, uh, sort of switcheroo, so to speak. Um, and I, I think the plan you've put together, I've always admired your creative, uh, talent, Christie. So thank you for putting that all together. And it's ideas like this that, you know, maybe not every single thing on the page is going to come to fruition, but we're being proactive, we're going after it, we're getting some buy-in here. Um, and, and, and that's the kind of thing that our businesses are going to need, sort of that, that prop up or that handholding or that support so that, um, um, when this does pass, however, uh, short or long that may be, people remember how they were treated during this crisis. Whether that's your employees at work, whether that's your businesses, whether that's your residents, whether that's the, you know, uh, each other. So, um, I commend, uh, Ben, you're, uh, yourself and, and the staff for coming up with really a, a, a creative way of merging DDA dollars into supporting really, um, uh, our downtown and the businesses there.
Thanks, Mark.
You, Councilmember Salvia.
Yes, um, just real quickly, uh, Christie and team, great work. Um, you really have been a voice with the business leaders, um, out there encouraging them, getting them access to the grants and the funding and, uh, just really keep continuing pushing that out um, and doing everything that you're doing. Um, obviously this is going to be a very fluid situation. Things are going to change just like they did, kind of on the way in. On the way out, they're going to change very fluid as well. So we have to be very flexible, um, be very aware of safety. Um, I do think there is going to be an element of people are going to want to get out and walk around in our town. I mean, my husband and I a few times have gotten out and seen that even, even in this, people want to walk through town. So continue to coach, collaborate, encourage the business owners to think differently than they have. Because, you know, things that used to work in the past aren't going to work now and I know you're aware of that. Um, and you know, one thing that I have heard recently is that a crisis is an accelerator for change. So we have to look at those changes that are going to be accelerated, whether it's curbside delivery or, you know, produce boxes at the farmer's market or, or things like that, that I know you guys are really working on. And, uh, just kudos to everything you're doing. Keep doing it and, um, we're going to get through this.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anything further? Uh, Councilmember, uh, DDA Chairman Jovanelli.
Old habits die hard, right? Uh, um, so a few things and, and Mark, to your point, I'm super sensitive and Dean had brought this up earlier of the role and, uh, us stepping in to be sort of marketing expense for private businesses downtown. Uh, I, I've always been sort of sensitive to this, but th- this is an unprecedented time. This really is not, I don't view this as, um, marketing for private businesses. Our residents, um, everybody's been trapped at home, locked inside for a month and a half, two months. And people are, I can only speak for the Jovanelli house, but I got to believe that it's probably pretty consistent throughout. Uh, people are looking for comfort, right? They want more of the familiar. They want, you know, the, and as this, there's a lot of assets that we have, having our own downtown that are going to position us really, uh, well for when this sort of happens. But by and large, our residents want to get out and, you know, like I said, roll the stone away from the cave and poke their head out into the sunshine and know that it's okay to come out. But, you know, I can guarantee you, well, I can't, I'm an accountant, right? But I, I can guarantee you that, almost guarantee you that, uh, people are not going to, the, the tether. I always joke with my wife that when we moved to Rochester, I, I had a mile and a half long tether tied to the center of my house. I didn't have to go anywhere farther than a mile and a half anywhere from my house to get everything I needed to lift. And I think that that is going to be an asset for us, for everybody that is coming out now, um, uh, to get sort of sticking their toe in the water and getting into the hot tub and knowing that it's going to be okay. Um, but, so that's going to be huge. I, I really do believe that, um, everybody's going to want to be outdoors as much as possible for the bulk of the summer. So a lot of the programming that we're talking about, the ideas that we've been spitballing are all going to be sort of outdoor, super, um, hypersensitive to social distancing and, um, uh, you know, all of the mandates, uh, that we need to make sure that, that we're fulfilling and making people feel comfortable, but also providing them that feeling of familiarity and comfort of being home and knowing that it's going to be okay. So, um, and, and Mark, you had, uh, talked about the, the PSD budget. Well, since the DDA is paying for the PSD budget this year, it's sort of our money anyway, right? So I, I don't really view this as marketing expense more than I do is providing that psychological boost for our residents and those in our community to know that, hey, it's, it's going to be okay, right? We got this. And Christie had mentioned it earlier and I hadn't really thought of it just because it's just how she rolls. Um, but, um, you know, every time I turn on the news or flick on my, open up my computers, nothing but, you know, doom and gloom and the end of the world. We have had none of that from your Downtown Development Authority and the people running, you know, that, it's been all the positive, accentuating the positives. So I, I can't, I can't overstated enough. I, I think it's super important for people to understand that it's going to be okay. And we don't have all the answers. As we sit here right now, we just simply don't have all the answers. But I want you to know that, um, to a person on the board and the team, you know, we want to do everything possible that we can to make our residents and those in the greater community feel good about going, you know, getting back their lives because that's what most people want. So, uh, I just with that, I, I really appreciate your guys' time and energy effort and life force and, and everything to try and, you know, steer the big ship. And I, I know that we're just one small part of it, but I'd like to think of the DDA as sort of the, um, um, you know, the feel-good part of the community, right? To let all of our residents and those know that, you know, this is home and it's, it's, it's a great place to love local, right? So that's, uh, why we're nailing it. And as far as the, um, the, the rent goes on the space, I just wanted to mention really quick. We did the math and I was going back and forth. Ends up being about, I don't know, 14 bucks a square foot or something like that. I'm paying 850 a square foot in Rochester Hills for warehouse. So it wasn't a ton of cash. Um, and, uh, Attorney Crock saved us some money on rent by saying, hey, they may not open up till March or till May 15th. And sure enough, he was right. So, uh, so we're going through that. Uh, we don't have anything to present to you just yet. We're still going through the, uh, I dotting and T crossing, but it's not going to be a huge dollar amount. Um, and like Christie said, most of it's already paid for through, um, uh, funding that we've gotten. So, um, I, I think it's important to have that presence on Main Street for all the reasons that were stated. And of course, we're going to be hypersensitive to making sure that we're doing it the right way. Uh, I know the chiefs will be on us 24/7, 365 to make sure that we're in compliance and, but the, the last thing we want to do is to create a situation where we're trying to convey the sense of, of comfort and familiarity and, and whatnot, and then have that to sort of all, you know, somebody walking without their mask on, that sort of thing. So we're, we're, we're super sensitive to it. I just wanted to, um, you know, let you guys know that, A, thank you for all you're doing for us because we really appreciate it. Um, there's been, uh, several times where I'm glad I'm not on council anymore and this is one of them. So I, I, you guys have got big shoes right now and I'm glad I'm not having to make all the tough decisions that you are. So we get to do the fun stuff and try and make people feel good and, and it's a better spot. I do better than that area. So, thank you.
Any further question? Uh, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so Christie, Ben, um, what is the anticipated amount of the grant we're going to get? Main Street grant from, uh, the county. I mean, does that cover this downtown studio? Is it a wash?
No, it doesn't cover the studio. This is just money that we would have gotten anyway. It's about $10,000 and it's money that we would have gotten anyway to use for other things. And we're just making the decision to redirect it to this. It was never intended to pay for the whole studio. It was just an opportunity because it can help also pay for some of the funding. That's my dog. It's rolling in, that's Odie. Um, so it's a way that we can pay for some of the tech. It was never intended to do that. It's not a grant, it's our money that we get from the county annually to do trainings. We're just going to redirect it to do trainings for the businesses in a different way.
Okay, so that's not in this proposal for us?
No, no.
So the grant nor the, the studios and, correct?
The studio is in there is, when we put into the budget, we put the money in the business development line, the 496. Um, it's the 805-009. It's in that, it's in that line item, both in the budget amendment that you'll see as well as in the, um, the budget that's currently in front of you. So the money for the studio for programming, training, setting it up, utilities, taxes, water, you name it, that would be coming out of that fund in addition to any training that we would be doing, any special, any consultants that we need to bring in, specialists, anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further for the DDA? All right, thank you. Coming in or not coming in or whatever, virtually coming in. Okay, on to the PSD budget.
That's me again. So, um, taking the mayor's lead, we decided instead, we did have a few new things that we are going to be throwing in this year, a Halloween event as well as a, sorry, my dog again. Here he is. Okay, off you go. I had avoided them for a couple, for a little while, but they're back. Um, so we took out, we were going to be doing actually a Halloween fundraising event. We took that one out, um, because we just don't think that's the time. This is going to be the time that that's going to be well received. And also we are going to be upping our game at holiday with some new promotions as well. So we've taken both of those out and just presented a static budget of what we had been doing previous years. The mayor had mentioned at DDA that you guys were looking for, um, basic budgets to start with and that's what we're looking at. Again, a lot of things, as Ben said, once we know what the new normal looks like, we may be shifting some dollars from some things into other things we just don't know yet. So we just wanted to present a business as usual budget and then see where we go from there without a, any new things in there. It does include the money coming over from DDA, um, for this budget year. And then it looks into next year, all that money's in DDA right now and some may get transferred over to PSD if that's where the money needs to go, if marketing is the play that we want to go with, so.
Okay, any, uh, questions or comments for Christie?
Uh, yeah, I've, I've one.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Um, I, I couldn't raise my hand because I'm on the sheet. What is contractual services, 493-752-805.001? Oh, oh, it's on the last page.
All right, give me the line item again, I'm sorry.
It's been $250,000 a year, I've just.
That's the light show.
Oh, okay, because I saw Big Bright Lights somewhere else, that's why I was.
Um, so Big Bright is the header and then it breaks down to Festival of Trees and Contractual Services, which is the contract for the Big Bright Light Show. So that's where the contract is and that's also where we, uh, have replacement lights.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ben, thank you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate your time.
Okay, all right. Moving right along, is approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 13, 2020, and also consideration of the minutes, the special meeting of April 13, 2020.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Back in.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is the authorization to purchase a rotary hoist for the DPW facility. And next is approval of reimbursement request for West Nile virus program. And I, I remember when we were all afraid of the West Nile virus. It seems like ancient history.
Motion. Agenda.
Councilman, um, you, you say it again, Councilor Peterson, you're muted.
Sorry, um, yes, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Or support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Okay, next there is no old business and we will move on to public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing tonight for the 2020, 2020 first proposed budget. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments before I open up the city, the, uh, public hearing?
Yes, I could just say a few things and then, uh, I know our finance director, uh, might also as well. Um, so gi- give me maybe about a minute. Um, so this year's, uh, proposed, uh, budget does not have, uh, any budget requests. Uh, um, it's what I would call a basic budget. Um, it will get us through, it has our standard, uh, personnel expenses. Um, it has our annual projects, our operating and maintenance items. Um, and, and basically is not, uh, I guess it's the one step up from in the past that I've called our core budget. When we went through a zero-based budget, it does have things like, um, you know, leaf pickup and, um, some of our other programs, uh, that, you know, we've determined, uh, over the last two years that. that the community really wants to continue. That said, similar to what Ben was talking about, I do anticipate that we'll have various times budget amendments. That's gonna be due to both revenue and expenditure changes that will be coming to council. Working with finance, we've now set those up at least quarterly, but we might have those a little bit more frequently with this, this budget. I do also want to note that this year's budget, like last year's, did go through our budget and finance subcommittee, which did include reviewing our reserve targets. We also looked at our various financial policies. We started this budget process, I had to go back through my notes, all the way back in August of last year. And so from staff to then our first meeting in the fall with the budget and finance subcommittee, we did the bulk of our work from November through February, which even included an update to our SWAT. Now, we weren't able to get to the budget requests, nor the PSD or DDA budgets. However, tonight, we just heard both the PSD and DDA budgets. So, again, this is a fully vetted budget. It's what I would call, again, a basic budget. There's not a lot of the options, if this was a car, doesn't have all the fancy gadgets that we typically would be presenting to council. However, it has the essentials. And Anthony, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to share?
Sure. Muted, okay, all right. Just a couple things to add, the great summary. So the, when we're looking at the, the initial budget, that basic budget, that's really, like City Manager Wing mentioned, to just keep, keep things as they are, keep providing the same services you're providing, don't add anything new, don't take anything away, keep everything status quo. And then the things that we look per our budget, budgeting policy is, we do have some changes in there, such as the inflation adjustment, we remove one-time revenues, one-time expenses, we have, if there are any federally, state, or local mandates that we have to comply and deal with, and then any contractual obligations, you know, multi-year contracts, the union contracts, the trash pickup contracts. So we know what those changes are for each year, so those are all in that initial budget. The piece that we obviously did not get to was the, we're just starting to get into up until this happened, was the, the S, the project scorecarding, the ranking of the request, the scene of how much funding is available and what would go into the budget. That, the budget is fluid, it is not a one-time-a-year item, it is meant to be looked at all the time, and, you know, it doesn't mean that we missed goals and objectives for this year, or that we're never gonna talk about those project requests, it's just going to come at a later time, and that is completely okay, especially under the circumstances. So, yeah, this definitely did start back in August, and, yeah, we're moving, we're moving along, so we're, we're gonna keep, keep things going. And then in the quarterly, there will be some amendments. We haven't adopted the budget, so there's not an amendment to next year's budget yet. So what I'm doing is I'm keeping track of all those items that we're going to need to change or talk about in the next year's budget, kinda on the side, and then those will come forward as we get closer.
Very good. And then, Mr. City Manager, we're gonna open up the public hearing, but we're not voting on accepting the budget tonight, correct?
The, the budget vote will be at our May meeting, and myself and the departments, that's typically when I go through, I don't know what kind, you know, a slideshow, but go through a PowerPoint that kinda highlights things. Council, you know, you have your binders are ready, the budget has been posted to the city's website, it's underneath the, the Finance Department section, let me see if I can pull it up right now, and one of the tabs there for, for Finance.
Accounting and Financial Reports.
Thank you, yep. So it's underneath the second, second tab for the Finance, the Accounting and Financial Reports. We've actually listed the last several years, so people can do comparisons, our audits, and some other information is there as well. So, and Anthony, were we able to get the PSD and DDA ones included into this?
Correct, yes, yes.
So, so if any, any residents have questions even tonight, that's already been posted to the city's website, so that there can be discussion tonight during the public hearing, or two weeks from now, when council will have another discussion, and hopefully vote to adopt the proposed budget on May eleventh.
All right, so now, we'll open up the public hearing, so, Ms. O'Connor, is there any correspondence? Need to unmute yourself?
Sorry about that, none that I received.
Okay. So at eleven-thirty-six, we will open the public hearing on the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty budget.
Mayor, I think you mean eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, what did I say?
Eleven, yeah, eight-thirty-six.
Eleven, seven, you know.
Quarantine time.
Is there any comment, any, any outside comments? Okay, at eight-thirty-six, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Okay, so, Mr. Manager, what's the next step?
Yep, so, thank you. I will work with my, my team here, and we will have the presentation on the eleventh, along with a resolution for council to adopt the proposed budget. And if there's any questions during the next two weeks prior to that meeting, you know, any council member or residents, you know, please send me an email so that my team can look into that topic and then have a response ready for the, the May eleventh meeting.
Okay. And again, thank you for the city staff for their work, and thank you for, to the Budget Committee for all their hard work as well, because I know the budget is, even though we're adopting the basic budget, it's still a lot of work, so I appreciate that, thank you. Next is legislative deliberation, is consideration of a resolution to extend the free parking. City Manager?
Yeah, so we extended the parking now twice, and with the last stay-at-home order that the governor has extended again, our current one is expiring on April thirtieth, so the end of this month. And so I worked with Anthony and our attorney, and we drafted up what's before you, there's kind of a, a little bit of a fill-in-the-blank. I don't know, you know, what council's preference is. I will recommend, you know, that we do, I prefer to have a end date so that it's not just open-ended, so that council at some point is gonna have to stop it. If we, you know, I don't mind, although, you know, might be a council person's preference to, you know, to just leave it open-ended. So we drafted it so it could either be left open, or we could put a date certain in there. Right now, it is set to expire on April thirtieth.
Good. So first, I have Councilmember Peterson, then Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, so, with, with that, I think that we should extend it to the date that the DDA had spoke of earlier with Ben, going to Labor Day. So I think that would, you know, if needed, so, I think that would take care of that, since we already have that, and it could be adjusted at a later time.
Councilmember Albrecht?
With respect to Councilmember Peterson, I was taking a different view, because in the notes, it said to keep it around a city council meeting. So I was gonna split the difference, just do it in June, before the June twenty-second meeting, then we can reevaluate by that time. I'm sure we will, if, if we're still in the same situation we are, we would definitely extend it, but I just didn't want to go as far out as Labor Day at this point. We can, it's very simple for us to talk about it as council and revote on it at that time.
I thought they were going to Memorial.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could suggest, I guess if there is a, a choice for, for the, the end of June, if we could just do it maybe towards the end of the month, so it still allows, or if it is in September, you know, so that maybe towards the, you know, either the beginning or the end of the, the previous month, so that we basically have a clean date, instead of just, I know a council meeting is a good date, but for us on staff, so that we can actually process it and publicize start and finishes.
Councilmember Keithley. Need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I appreciated Mayor Protem Bavacqua's comments about what the actual cost is to us, so I would be curious to, to see what that is, because it sounds like we have cleaning maintenance right now, but the snow removals were already passed, because at the, in the quarterly report, it looked like we were doing a fifty-fifty split with the DDA and the city, and I, I would like to see what the actual maintenance costs are projected to be, and I really appreciated DDA Chairman's willingness to take that number back to the DDA and, and consider taking that on, because it is, it's a lot of money, I think twenty-six thousand per week for these decks, and so I think reevaluating or reassessing earlier, as Councilman Albrecht suggested, I would be in support of that.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. You know, I, I just wanted us to stay consistent with what the DDA had, so Ben said April, June were going to be the months of the current fiscal that they were going to, you know, put in for as well, so I just thought consistency would matter, and then he mentioned going to September for the last three, so I'm fine with June as well, June thirtieth, and then we reevaluate at that time.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht, further discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
You're muted, Bavac, Dean. Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keithley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have free parking for a while. Well, there's nothing completely free in life, but, next is a report regular businesses, a report from the two thousand nineteen annual police. Report, I assume that crime is down now, Chief, because everybody's home and nobody's, right? So take it away, Chief.
Thank you. Yes, we are pleased to report that current crime is, is down, but we are, you know, there are things that are going on in the city, but more importantly, we're talking about two thousand nineteen, when crime was also down. And just to highlight some of the things that are covered in the report, you know, the report obviously starts with the addition of Pearl to the police department, and the enhancements that that provides for the department to have both a tracking and an explosive K-9 available to us, and she's been used a number of times, not only in and outside of the city, and provided to be an asset. There's also, with the K-9 program in general, is the addition of the PR aspect of that, that it's a great tool for being very approachable and having access to kids in and out of schools and that, things of that nature, so we're, we're very positive and appreciate the support of council for that, and all the programs that they support with the police department. We also highlighted the addition of the new video system for our patrol vehicles, it enhances what we already had in place, and also the addition of laptop computers to speed up and continue our ability to have report writing in the cars, so that officers don't have to come into the station, which right now, during this time period, has been very beneficial, because we encourage officers to spend their time out on the road and not here in the station, coming in and out, to try to help keep our station virus free. We also highlighted our ability to have a successful lean audit as the law enforcement identification network. Very, very difficult for departments to come through that unscathed, which is what we get. It shows that we have great attention to detail by our records staff to make sure that all of our records are in good order, that our warrants are being taken care of properly, that can be a very expensive item for a city. If we don't do that, and someone is arrested on a warrant that shouldn't be in the computer, it also shows the ability of our officers to take good care when they're running things into the computer and making sure that they are properly documenting what they're doing, or able to justify any searches of criminal histories or other items. So it, it really does show that, you know, really, the entire department is, has a focus on the integrity of those systems and the ability to pass that with fine colors. Throughout the rest of the report, it does show that things are doing well in the city, that we're responding to less calls for services last year, but really in about an average number of calls from year to year. And again, we certainly appreciate the support that we get from council, it allows us to do the job and do the job well, and certainly prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief, council. Any questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, great report, it was interesting reading through that. My question, though, is the three hundred and seventy-five car accidents that we've had, showing some of the, you know, that, is there any way that anything would change that, or were these just, you know, as they happen, you know? Is it anything to do with speed, is it lights? Just, just asking.
Right, there was nothing that really stuck out to us as far as any particular patterns or locations. One of the things that we did in, in past years was, we worked with the road commission to create enhancement at De Quinter and Runyon Road to increase the safety there with the adding a left-turn phase, and so we tried to monitor those situations, and where we find there's a particular issue that's, that, where we can create a safety enhancement, we try to work with the situation, whether it be through traffic enforcement or through engineering, to, to create that improvement. But we don't, there's nothing here that sticks out as something that we missed. We've had far less traffic, and frankly, we still have accidents, so somehow they do happen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keithley?
Thank you, thank you, Chief, for this report, and thank you to you and the force for the great work you've been doing. I enjoyed the highlights from two thousand nineteen. I think that one might have gotten missed, though, so I wanted to ask about it. Rochester was named the second safest city in Michigan by the National Council for Home Safety and Security, and I think that is a recognition that you should be very proud of, and I'd love to see included in that report if you felt it was appropriate, because it takes a lot of work to get that recognition, and it's something that we can be very proud of in that community.
Yeah, since that was actually presented in two thousand twenty, you can be assured that it will be a highlight of the two thousand twenty annual report, for sure.
Congratulations on that recognition.
Thank you. Well, that's something that everyone should share, and, you know, real good community policing is certainly a partnership between us and the community, and so everybody has a share in, in that honor, for sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht.
I lowered my hand, Councilmember Keithley addressed my thing, call-out also.
Very good. All right, thank you, Chief, for your usual excellent job for your police force outstanding. Now we move on to the fire department. Chief Seazak, welcome, and maybe give a, maybe give a heads-up on how the, how the health of those couple fire guys are doing.
So they're back, the, the two people are back to work.
Oh, excellent.
The, so, both of them recovered with no issues, and, and so we're back up to full strength.
Okay, thank you.
So, for two- So for two thousand and nineteen, some of the notable things that went on at the fire department was just under sixteen hundred hours of training were conducted with the firefighters to maintain their skills. Last year, we did about nineteen hundred and sixty three calls, which is an average of three percent increase year over year. Back in two thousand and twelve, we were running fifteen hundred calls. In two thousand and nineteen, we're at nineteen hundred and sixty three. Medical emergencies still account for about seventy two percent of the calls. From what we're running, last year, we were able to recover just under four hundred thousand dollars. We did do a survey for our medical emergencies and averaged a ninety nine percent very satisfied in all categories with the with our residents within the city and the patients that we took care of. Fire response was up this, in nineteen twenty seven fires for the year, up from eighteen the year before. No real explanation with that, but we're looking at our information on where we can go from a public information standpoint. Community engagement continues to be a big function of what we try to do with the fire department. Last year, we had interacted with nineteen hundred and ninety four school age children. We did four hundred and eighty six adults from different house of worship and other businesses. We did thirty three fire station tours within the fire department. And again, community engagement continues to be very important. Something that's noteworthy is is firefighters were very worked on doing several events that raised funding for the different charities. And they donated about thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars from the different things that they did. We had a very successful open house with about four hundred and twenty people in attendance. And and also continue to have our cert team. And just a note is is that our cert team was activated through the EOC out of the state of Michigan. We have some cert members down doing traffic control at one of the testing sites in Detroit, based on the request from the state of Michigan. As much as we don't like to, and we do continue to turn up the politeness, we did have hundred and fifty two code violations. For some reason, we had a very large portion of the group that we had to end up going to court with Attorney Pratt to go ahead and get resolution from. The group that we continue to have the most problems with are rental homes. These are homes that people rent, are purchasing and then rent out. And we're up a little over three hundred and twenty rental properties within the city. When we take a look at inspections, as far as building inspections, culinary inspections, we conducted about just under thirteen hundred inspections. And we're very proud of our emergency management team. We've established a set of series of goals. Some of the big things that we're real proud of was the House of Worship tabletop training, local business and business continuity. We started the promotion for civic ready and the emergency alerting system. We had launched the Rochester Ready website. And we're continuing to do outreach through training for kids. We also have a regular program that we do at the OPC. And we've got very into the social media with our webpage, not quite as popular as the police yet, but I'm still waiting for one of the firefighters to find a stump that they can put a cup on the nose and chase it around and see if we can get a video like the chief has. With that, probably the big accomplishments were some of the things that we were really working for was our reduction in response times. Our average structured fire now response time is under eight minutes. It's seven minutes and twenty two seconds. That's down from fourteen minutes. We achieved a class rating of a class three. And only eight percent of fire departments in the nation are at that rating. That's an improvement from a class five. It really takes a look at what the fire department has accomplished in training, equipment and preparedness. The other things that we're we're proud of is is what we've continued to do from the EMS standpoint and the services that were provided and also being prepared for emergencies. Happy to go ahead and answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, thank you, Chief. Thank you for the report. Most notably, it's great to see the response times, you know. That has been the focus with the fire department is to get our response times where they're at. So that's great. Good work. Two questions. One is, I know mutual aid is a big part of what the fire department does. And I don't really see any comments in the report regarding mutual aid. I mean, in general, I know we give more than we receive. So I think there should be some general comments at a minimum around mutual aid and what we do as a fire department for the surrounding communities. And then, secondly, this is really more of a go forward question. I know that we are in the process of, I'll say, repositioning the EMS services that, you know, typically bring in about four hundred thousand dollars in revenue. With some changes, we're looking to be certified for the ET three. And I think ET three has been delayed. Just any comments on anything we can do to be prepared for that?
So we have been certified for ET three. Right now, ET three has been pushed back into the summer. We anticipate it will probably get moved into the fall. And anticipation, we're working with Oakland County and a vendor to take a look at video conferencing in regards to our EMS treatment, which gives us the ability to take the alternate sites other than just the hospital. We continue to go ahead and work with Prittonton. And although we're not doing as many transporters as we used to, we're still doing some. So we're trying to keep our our really operation with Prittonton and and not telling them that we're not interested. An interesting note is is that most recently, community ambulance along with Beaumont both sold to Superior, because the Beaumont system got out of the ambulance business. We've had several meetings with the people over at Troy Beaumont and respected what we may be able to do to help support them. It is something that we're trying to go ahead and pay close attention to, because we do are very lucky to have that income stream. We did protect our budget for the upcoming one with a potential reduction and what our revenue would be in anticipation of that. And we do are looking forward to the ET three process. There'll be some additional run volume that we'll be expecting to go ahead and get out of that. Although without seeing the published rate yet, it's hard for me to give you a good estimate. As regards to the mutual aid, we continue to run about a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen mutual aid calls per year. About fifty percent of those are EMS, in which cases we do receive the payment for those EMS runs. The other are mutual aid runs for for fire protection. About forty percent of those are canceled en route, because they request for help and and not need it, because the fire wasn't as big as what they thought. And so, you know, mutual aid is again something that we rely on to be able to have that service to protect our residents in the city of Rochester. The good news is, is we are, don't have that many calls. We're really pushing hard on the inspection and the prevention side. And that's not to say that our other neighbors don't do the same thing. But when you start taking a look at the size of our city compared to Rochester Hills, Auburn Hills or Oakland Township, obviously, it's a much larger area with a lot more opportunities for fires. And so that's one of the reasons that we get called out. One of the benefits, if you can call it a benefit, is helps keep our skills up, so that when we do have fires within our city, our our guys and men and women are well trained and and prepared to go ahead and respond to those calls. So there is, I guess, if you want to call it a silver lining to the mutual aid calls, and that's making sure that our men and women are ready to go ahead and respond and do the great job that they do here in the city of Rochester.
What's that, Councilmember Salvia?
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I just wanted to point out in the report on page sixteen, I know we talked about this at a prior council meeting, but all the residents of Rochester benefited from us going from a class five to a class three when they got their home insurance renewals this year. Lower, you know, it it lower, should have lowered premiums because of that better rating. So just wanted to call that out and congratulate you. And I know a lot of that had to do with the full time fire department, but notwithstanding also the other work that you and your team have done there, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Chief, very much. Excellent job. Okay, next is to receive the third quarter finance report. Mr. City Manager, and just, just probably Blaine gets tired of me asking. And I think Anthony's going to address this, but, you know, I continually ask, what is all, what does all this stuff going on mean? You know, what's our stress test? What's our budget look like? Give us some numbers. Give us, you know, whatever you can do. What are the projections? So, I mean, I'm constantly asking for that. And, and, you know, it's, you know, we don't know, right? I think that's one thing. But so I think Blaine, Blaine and Anthony are going to try to address that, Blaine.
Yeah, so let me just tee it off, but and publicly say that we're doing our best to track. So we know at least what we're expensing specifically to the COVID nineteen. And Anthony has a handout that's in tonight's council packet, and he'll be walking through that as well. The other question or comment, I think, that the mayor and I know other council members and some of the public have been asking. And we have, and we've continued to stress test our our budget process. We've looked back at, you know, what the numbers were back in oh eight, nine and ten to see and kind of evaluate that versus where we were previously when we started our budget process. Like I said, this past fall to where we are now. And, you know, Anthony will be able to touch a little bit more on some specifics there as well. This is our third quarter, and so we, you know, we have gone through three fourths of our overall budget process. And you'll see there's very few things that are in, I guess, the yellow or red categories, which, again, if we're looking or thinking about this as a stop stoplight, green's good, yellow, we need to pay attention to, and red is definitely very cautionary unless there's a next explanation or a reason. So with that, I'll hand it over to Anthony. And if you could start walking through, you know, the COVID, explaining the 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 stress test component, as well as then the the typical third quarter stuff. Anthony?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor, council. We have, of course, the quarterly report here in front of you. And what I decided to do, because what is, of course, on everyone's mind is, what does this impact mean to us with the COVID nineteen? The thing that's really interesting overall is is in government, the majority of our money is obviously tax revenue, right? So that's where the bulk of of our funds come from. The taxes are set as of December thirty first of the prior year. Assessment notices are sent out to the property owners at the beginning of February. March border review comes, amounts get finalized, and we move forward for the year. So although the the impact is striking us now towards the end of March, and as we see at least through May fifteenth, and of course, the coming winding down and coming out of all the lockdowns and restrictions, the, it it doesn't have a really much of any impact on what our tax revenue is going to be cash flow wise. What we've seen back in like oh seven and eight is a delay of payment. But at the end of the way it works in Michigan, whatever amounts are outstanding as of March first, Oakland County issues a bond and the city is made whole for any of the outstanding amounts. So there's not, on the tax side, a lot of concerns for the current year. But it obviously lags. So as we go forward, we we really need to to watch, and I'll be watching to see what the impact is on the taxes and the tax sales, because the values are essentially based on sales of the property. So we need to see, once this kind of rolls out, are houses selling just like they were before, above, below assessments? And then that'll give us a gauge as to what we're going to be looking at for for next year. Some of the revenue impacts. We had no shortage to talk tonight on the parking fund. So in the quarterly report here, you'll you'll notice the the snippet there on us getting about twenty six thousand per week. There's a couple of comments on the maintenance and things that we can roll back. We obviously will be rolling back as many things as are not critical as possible. But we have spent the majority of the maintenance and capital projects as we did those last summer at the start of the new budget year. So the majority of those expenses have have already occurred. So there's no pending large capital projects or anything. And then on the maintenance side, if we don't have to fix it, and it's not going to, you know, put a strain on being costlier to repair later, then then we're definitely taking that into to consideration. Water and sewer fund impact. So one of the first things I started doing was asking Cory, our water foreman, and our superintendent Jason Dickinson for the the reports on, what are the flows looking like, right? The businesses are closed. Is our water going down, usage going up, usage staying the same? What's happening? For the most part, it's been relatively flat. There hasn't been a large offset that wouldn't necessarily been seen in any other year. East side, for the most part, is actually right where it where it normally is. Sewer flows are right where they should be, very close to. And on the west side, which is where the majority of the businesses are, we have seen some decrease. So there are a couple of amendments in there, but nothing, nothing super wild. Nothing going, oh, my gosh, we need to do an emergency meeting and take action right now. Just some minor changes. And then with everyone being home, the water that they usually would spend during the day and at work, well, they're home now using it. So so we've seen increase on the home side usage, whereas we're seeing essentially almost a complete stop on the businesses. Other thing that's big impact, gas taxes. So we get our Act fifty one monies, which is shared to us through the state. And there is a fairly substantial lag, almost a quarter on the lag. So when you pay at the pump and you pay all of your gas taxes in every gallon, you are now going to be, that money's going to go to the state. The state then distributes it based on the Act fifty one formula to the municipalities. Now, what's kind of interesting with it is there are some statistics that essentially forty five percent of the workforce in Michigan is in one of those essential service categories. So we are expecting a huge decrease for a month by essentially a little over fifty percent. We're actually bumped it up a little higher than that. And then once these orders start lifting, like essentially now letting landscapers go back out, letting, you know, letting those those things start happening again, that usage will bump right back, right up again. And as long as gas stays really cheap, as more things open, and if it still stays cheap, people tend to travel more. So there may be a late summer recuperation a little bit that may help flatten out some of that. In the meantime, for the current year, projecting about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollar decrease that we're going to be getting from the gas tax sharing through this pandemic. But we really won't know the impact, and even the state doesn't even have an estimate either to use. So I'm basically cutting it in half, a little over, for the rest of this year. And then, so we'll get March's numbers in April. At the end of May, we'll get April at the end of June. So as we get towards June, the end of the year, fiscal year, we'll have hopefully a slightly better idea on what the money we receive then for April and what that impact really is going to be felt at. The other big one is the state constitutional revenue sharing. That six percent sales tax, fifteen percent of four percent of. That six percent sales tax, fifteen percent of four percent of that is shared down uh, to the municipalities on a population basis. Uh, population basis, I'm gonna insert plug for the census, please fill out your census if you can. We, um, every person counts. This is uh, one of those items where we absolutely, for the next ten years, that number is directly proportional to how much money we get in that sales tax sharing. Um, there's been a lot of reports on it. Obviously, people aren't spending as much necessarily in certain areas. Uh, so we, we expect a uh, a large decrease in that, about a hundred and ten thousand. Uh, but then there's a counterpoint to that going, well, people are still spending money, they're spending it at home now. They're doing Amazon Prime, they're doing groceries, uh, well, groceries, no tax, sales tax, but you know, they're, they're doing these items that they're um, they're spending the money. So maybe the sales tax isn't as greatly impacted necessarily as it, as it may have been um, otherwise. But it, everyone's all over the board on that one, too. We ask every uh, different organization, the economists, U of M, uh, they all have a different uh, version on, on what that will be. So we just kind of used basically an average of those to see. Um, you'll, you'll notice one of the red items in the uh, quarterly report is uh, building permits. Obviously, with the shutdown and the cease and desist on construction, um, there is no activity in the building department at the moment. Um, what will that be coming out of this? It, will she even lift that order soon for construction activities? When will people be able to start um, uh, you know, doing uh, building uh, and, and repair work and non? They're still doing emergency repairs that never stop, but the uh, the voluntary projects. So there's an amendment in there for roughly about um, a hundred and five thousand for permit decreases. Uh, and then another twenty two thousand uh, that would be related, um. I'm sorry, looking at the wrong line, a li- little over eleven thousand dollars uh, related to the uh, what may be pulled for like water tap fees and, and those sort of items. Uh, so we have that. We've uh, also are pursuing all grant and stimulus funding uh, to help mitigate as much of the expense side and uh, items as we can. Um, uh, unfortunately, there's, there's not a uh, a uh, unemployment fund for the, the city. Uh, as far as the revenue sharing loss and the Act fifty one loss, uh, those items, uh, there's, there's not gonna be any grants um, or discussions so far talked about. Um, there have been uh, larger cities uh, in some of the bills that are getting money, um, funneled to them to help out through the uh, C D B G formula. Um, I know Senator Peters um, and um, and Blaine, I know you've been on top of those two, uh, they're trying to get um, the feds to say, hey, you need to push that more than just a five hundred thousand dollar population limit to the cities. You need to, you need to look at all of your cities, even the smaller ones, they need some help on the money uh, and funding too. So that, that continues to be uh, to be um, waiting and we'll see how optimistic uh, that ends up being. We have received just under ten thousand dollars so far in uh, stimulus funding. That was through the uh, CARES Act, um, and because we provide EMS services. Uh, so they had a large amount of money that they um, they split to every agency based on how much they billed uh, through uh, Medicare. Um, and so we have received the nine thousand five fifty five so far. There is a second round also in the works, so that will um, come um, hopefully within the next uh, month from what I'm looking at the, their timetable. They're looking to pushing that pretty uh, pretty quickly. Uh, some of the other items, uh, um, then I'll just hit it up for questions, cause I, I know a lot of this will let, you know, whatever questions you have, we'll kind of go into. It's a lot of information. Uh, we do have the amendments in here, the DDA contribution, uh, the hundred and eighty nine thousand. We have the decreased uh, parking meter collections, the uh, permits and fines and those such things. Um, we do have uh, no, um, let's see, we talked about that one, uh, major and local streets, adjusting for the gas tax revenue. Um, adding in already approved projects that um, were approved by council, but not officially in a budget amendment sort. So those, those are now in here, um, and then removing some of the costs that, that we're not gonna be incurring. Um, the city manager wing said, things that are non-essential, like for instance, one of the items, bridge construction, right? So we, we know we're not having any bridge construction or maintenance, uh, there wasn't anything planned now for, for this uh, uh, spring. So we have those amendments in there to take those, those monies out. With all of that being said, even with all of the, the bad news, um, uh, or the reality news, I, I guess, uh, as it were. Um, we're still, uh, I'm still projecting uh, oh, a little over two hundred thousand dollars for the current uh, budget year. Um, as of June thirtieth, that will still be in a surplus. Um, definitely down from um, you know, the three hundred thousand or so, uh, but uh, we'll, we'll take anything that we can get. Um, we know in the future years, uh, we, we have a, a, the, the nice thing about the multi-year budgeting and having uh, these financial policies in place is um, you're really able to be uh, reactive and move very quickly and fluidly to change. Um, uh, through councils uh, uh, wisdom and process and adopting the fund balance policies. Um, w- we can weather uh, storms and impacts like these. And, and that's an important uh, part of it uh, in the fund balance uh, policies. You know, we have the components in each of the funds for emergency reserves, restricted reserves, uh, capital projects that are, that are being planned for. Um, unfunded mandates, liabilities, future opportunities, these are all items that are in all of these fund balances uh, in the policy. So um, you know, when things like this come up and we say, hey, you're gonna lose, you know, a hundred thousand in state shared revenue and a little over a hundred thousand in building permit, a little over this, a little over that. Um, uh, you know, we don't expect this to be an ongoing item that every year we're gonna be used, losing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in the perpetual COVID, um, you know, forever. Uh, but these one-time uh, large-scale events, uh, you know, through councils' wisdom and adoption and, and the finance subcommittees. Uh, never-ending work on, on the financial planning. We can take uh, the brunt of these uh, these, these forces and, and still be okay and not have to uh, panic. And um, you know, there's a lot of municipalities, they, they don't have that planning. So something like this, and I'm, I'm seeing it all over on the, on the state treasurer's board. I, I'm seeing the municipalities that are just like, we don't have money now to pay anything. Um, and they're uh, uh, you know, they're hurting. So we're, we're very fortunate here that we have uh, good financial planning, uh, councils, uh, you know, foresight in making sure we're, we're in the multi-year budgeting, that we can make the adjustments, that we're seeking the funds where we can, grants where we can, uh, and that we're, we're, you know, as was mentioned earlier, did not have to lay off any employees, no plan ever was it even discussed that, that employees were gonna be, need to be laid off or furloughed, like you've heard in the news from other municipalities. Uh, but that comes with a lot of grit and determination and sticking to your guns and sticking to your policies and staying on course. And so that, that's a really uh, commendable thing that, that I think the city is uh, is, is a leader um, in, in that regard with. So um, that's, that's about as s- summary as I'll hit on, on that item. So I'll just open it up to, to um, Mayor, give it back to you, or if you want questions, uh, happy to answer.
Questions, Council? Questions, comments? Anthony, would you comment on the um, oh, well, just, I'll ask a quick question then, yeah, Councilmember Peterson, just on the businesses going to a tax tribunal and do we think that's gonna be a rush? Do we think we're gonna lose some of those things? Do you have any comments on that?
Sure. Um, you know, obviously, uh, it's not a surprise to anybody that the businesses and anyone that, you know, we all work, right? So we, we know that all of our places of employment are very uh, impacted by this. Um, in Michigan, uh, back in uh, a little less than ten years ago or so, um, you know, they, the business side can appeal their taxes up through the end of May. We have had uh, two uh, specific uh, large tax-paying businesses, um, just openly tell us, we're losing a ridiculous amount of money, we have to appeal this. Um, you know, and, and they're very much engaged in the community and they almost, you know, when they're saying it, they almost hate to even say it, you know, like it's a, it's a slap to uh, to us. But um, uh, they, they will be appealing it. Um, that's gonna run through the tax tribunal, uh, Michigan Tax Tribunal. Uh, cause they, they did not make the uh, border review uh, cutoff, but they, they can still appeal uh, uh, to the state for commercial properties and, and they will. Uh, but what's gonna be interesting um, is uh, there, I, I think the tax tribunal is gonna have a hard time legislatively with it. Um, cause there is no doubt they can absolutely have an impact on this virus for next year's taxes. Cause it's really December thirty first, twenty nineteen, how was everything? Everything was okay, everything was doing great, so the values are set. So will they let a legislatively post uh, December thirty first date have an impact on uh, taxable values um, or not? Uh, I, as far as I know, it's kind of an unprecedented area, we're in unprecedented times, uncharted waters. That could be something as simple as a governor's order, perhaps, uh, uh, issue away from saying, yes, it can. Um, uh, but we'll have to wait in the, and see on that one. Um, but more to come. Right now, nothing, nothing for sure either way.
That's Mayor Peterson.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, very good uh, report, Anthony, uh, very detailed and a lot of great information. And thank you very much for uh, really staying on top of every line item as how it affects us with what's happening right now. Uh, my question though, as you kind of touched on regarding the real estate in, not on the tribunal part, but um, mine is, you think that the um, loss of sales that we've had right now, which is a very high number of dollar amount from, since this actually took place in March from where we were um, last year at this time, going to have um, a trickle-down effect from the county? And how it'll affect us uh, financially, receiving any funds in the future?
Receiving funds for the uh, for tax, like the valuations for next year? Um, yeah, that's a, a, yeah, great question on that one. So uh, you know, obviously, they're looking at sales to get comparables, right? And they're gonna look at the same type of house on the block to other types of houses. If there are no sales, they then go, where is the next nearest sale outside of the city? Um, so um, depending on what that specific type of house, the quality of, the valuation. Um, in another municipality, how it sold will impact, um, will impact us. Um, there's not enough sales data, data yet um, here or really anywhere, cause it's, it's kind of so new. We, we know we're having almost none. I mean, there's, I, I, I mean, real estate offices are closed during this, there's still some sales going on. We're still getting a couple sheets coming in, but we're, it's basically come to a halt. Uh, so there is no data to even um, you know, no sales doesn't mean a decrease or an increase. They'll just kind of use the, the city average, as it were. Um, and then we'd be impacted by the next neighboring communities and however far out they have to go to see what the sales are looking like in the area.
Okay, um, I guess, well, I guess that's it for now. I, I, I just know that um, the loss is huge. I know that state and county transfer taxes that aren't being collected either are going to have a huge impact at both of their levels. And I'm just, I'm concerned about how it's going to play a part in the future here with um, you know, any businesses that may go not, you know, go out of business, any homeowners. They're already talking about the foreclosure rate is going to be increasing here in the next few months. Um, it, you know, all of this is going to have, like I said, that trickle-down effect, not just right now, but it's like in the foreseeable future. Um, especially for next year's taxes, so I don't know, I'm, I
You're right on.
Yeah, I think
Can I add just one thing? Um, for the future, definitely, Ann. But currently, the Rochester is very unique and fortunate that our tax receivables, what we received in for the taxes this year, we're at ninety nine point two six percent. So we don't have a ton of delinquency. We're very fortunate as a community as, as it relates to that. But we will definitely keep a close eye on what's going forward for the twenty twenty tax year.
Right.
Hey, and I just wanna say, two thousand eight, nine, I think, I, I think it went from ninety nine percent people paying their taxes, you know, down to like ninety two percent. You know, so I mean, there's, there's couldn't be a
Yeah.
Probably gonna be a drop. Uh, Councilmember Salvia, you had a question coming?
Uh, yes, so thank you, Anthony and Marcy and the team, great report. Thank you for the level of detail. I do think we're just gonna have to continue to be very conservative and, you know, forecasting in terms of conservative, cause there's so much uncertainty that's out there. Um, I really like the summary page on sixty six that gives us the summary of COVID nineteen and the impact of, you know, currently a financial impact of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh, to the budget. Uh, we're just gonna have to keep monitoring this and um, you know, keep doing our best to cut costs where we can. And um, I'm most concerned about the, the state funding, uh, the revenue sharing and those state funding items. Um, that, that's where my biggest concern is within the budget from a, a revenue standpoint. Um, in order to move this forward, I believe we need a motion to receive the report and then to authorize the budget amendments. So I can make that motion.
Correct. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Salvia.
Support.
Or by Councilmember Peterson, discussion, Councilmember Keith Lee.
I, I was gonna make the motion, so I, I supported.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to also uh, pile on the praise. I, I appreciate uh, how easy this report is to consume. I think that uh, Anthony and Mercy and the team, again, they're, are doing some uh, some great work for us and um, I just very much appreciate it, so thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do, I wanna echo that and I'll also just say that I think this council is all pretty much on board for that we need to be conservative and we need to really watch what we're doing. So I mean, I think that's, you know, we're, we're all, we're all speaking from the same uh, playbook, as they say. So I think that really makes our council strong, so I, I think that's all good. And you know, I think Blaine and the staff understand where we're coming from, so I think that's all really positive. Um, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a report from the various boards and commission, and we have a report from the trailway commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, few items. First being the uh, log jam there underneath the bridge uh, that uh, leads to the entrance of dinosaur hill. Uh, I know the city's aware of it. Um, we did get word today from the trail that the local chapter of uh, Trout Unlimited is willing to help us clear that as soon as the stay-at-home order is lifted. So that is very good news and I would hope that we can then coordinate. Um, Nick, you, you may know the, the uh, is it the Vanguard chapter? You may know the leader of that, of that group.
Yeah, yeah, Scott Humming, we already talked, yeah, they've done it every year, that gets jammed up there about every year. So they like that project, so yeah, we're on it, we got it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, next, the National Trails Day, which was scheduled for June sixth uh, this year, uh, will obviously be postponed. But there is plans to reschedule for the fall, so there'll be some more uh, updates on that forthcoming. And then finally, the last question that the trail presented to the municipalities that are involved in the agreement. Uh, there's only two, us and, and uh, I think it was Oakland, to make sure that we would be assisting with grading of the trail uh, this year. We've had some rough conditions. And uh, it's not called upon every year, but the question is then out there to uh, to our municipality as far as our portion of the trail and our ability to help assist in, in grading it.
We, we do budget annually uh, an amount for maintenance, so uh, you know, we'll talk with their staff and uh, get that coordinated if there's specific
So, you know, we'll talk with their staff and get that coordinated if there's specific areas. We, you know, are typically out there even before requests come out to, to work on the maintenance of certain areas. We get ruts and, and whatnot through the winter season come spring that Carl and our team, you know, are out there working.
Okay. Thank you. We're good, okay. Next is on to new business for referral miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Yep, just have one check register, which is the April fifteenth. And then for the manager's update, which is on page eighty-four and eighty-five of the agenda packet. I'm just not going to bother reading from my memo, but I want to highlight a few items in there. The city did create the reopening advisory committee. Subcommittees have been created and the city has recently dedicated a page on our website. So it's, you know, the RochesterMI.org slash the word open. And we're starting to put information up. The four committees are there. And Anthony and the finance team actually has already done a request for proposal. And we've gotten some information in regarding to disinfectant results from various companies so that our businesses and other organizations in the community could utilize, you know, the, the work that we've already done. And we'll be continuing to post additional information. The CDC and some of the other ones have actually put additional guidance. And we're continuing to update that page. So again, our website slash the word open. Next, I want to highlight in the memo as well that the Budget and Finance Committee has reviewed staff's recommendation to bond for our pension liability. There's a great deal, almost a page worth of information that's in the memo. And staff will be making a presentation to council on May eleventh. But again, I just wanted to highlight that and note that there'll be a full discussion and recommendation to all of council on May eleventh. Finally, I want to again thank all the city's employees for all the, the efforts that they've been doing throughout this whole time. And I especially want to thank a great job and an extra big thanks to our police, fire and public works as well as our management team. There's countless amount of hours behind the scenes here, you know, really to make sure that our community is, is not just functioning, but running well. And a big thanks to all the directors, our first responders, including public works, making sure our water systems run effectively, sewer systems, if we have potholes. You know, we are having our essential workers out there doing, you know, the work that needs to get done. And then behind the scenes, there's the various department staff responding to phone calls, emails, making calls to our seniors. There's, there's a lot of things, a lot of good things that I'm very proud of. And again, I just want to thank them publicly. And that's all.
You? Madam Clerk?
Just that this Wednesday, the Oakland County Clerks are going to be having a conference call with Secretary of State Benson regarding the August and November elections. Guidance so far through the end of last week is for us to just prepare as we would for normal situations. So we'll stay tuned. We've seen how that can change quickly recently. So I will keep you advised if there's any changes to the normal process.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, welcome and thank you for getting all dressed up tonight.
Yeah, just thank you. It's a good meet, it's a good meeting when the attorney doesn't have to talk. So that's a good thing. Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Nick or the two chiefs, anything?
I would just tell you that our fourteen recipients of the grant money from the county got their letters Monday. And I know we heard from a few of them thanking us. They don't know who picked them, but thanking the city for getting them the five thousand dollar grant. Obviously, we wish we could have taken care of everybody, but that was round one. The county's possibly going to do a round two. We'll follow the same evaluation route that we did before. So that's a good sign. So that's all I've got, thank you, sir.
Two chiefs, okay?
We're good. We're good, thank you.
Council, Sandy, anything?
Actually, I did want to let you know, Councilmember Sage, that we have been in discussions with parks already. We do indeed have the trail grading scheduled already. So please know that it is coming and we are aware of the issues out there.
Very good, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
Just two things, Mayor. One, the tree committee met on Arbor Day, our first meeting.
All right.
And along with Mayor Protem Bavakwa and Councilmember Salvia, we had Nick Banda, City Attorney Jeff Crotte. And then our commercial citizen was Bill Thomas and our resident was Melissa Weiss. We had a very good meeting and we will be coming back to city council with expansion, a little bit of what we want to do, the tree committee, beyond just fixing what, what was established for. So we've set up a meeting for this Friday to continue that. And we'll bring something to you, Mayor and City Council, for the next meeting on what we're looking at. Secondly, I just wanted to thank the city, part of Amanda and I, as new council members have been to try to get educated. And I was able to, over the last three Tuesdays, complete three webinars on roles and responsibilities of a newly acted official, the top ten tips and a review of the Open Meetings Act. So City Manager Blaine Wing supported that. It was a, a nominal charge, but very helpful to me. And I think it's my duty as a council member to continue to get myself educated. And that's to the Michigan Municipal League. And I'm sure the more experienced council members on, on council have gone through seminars and webinars by the Michigan Municipal League. And they're very, very good. So I just wanted to thank the city for allowing me to attend.
Thank you. What, what's the number one tip that you got out of that?
Oh, I figured you were going to ask me.
Yeah, it's just a
I mean, really, really, they talked about, one of the things was that we are a council of together. It's not one person. We, we act as a team. We act together. So I think that was one of the things that was the big takeaway and, and sort of resonated with me. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Salvia?
Yes, thank you. Just thank you to City Manager Blaine, echo all your comments. Everyone's hard work is greatly appreciated. Also, the OPC Board meeting met last week and they are in sound financial position, you know, mostly due to thankfully the, the tax dollars that they receive. They are not eligible for any of the grants that are out there, any of the federal money. So they have cut costs where they can and are in a good financial position, especially because they need to continue to provide those essential services for our vulnerable seniors through Meals on Wheels. And speaking of Meals on Wheels, they have redesigned the annual Meals on Wheels run on the trails, run, walk on the trails. And it is now going to be, you make a donation and you do it at your own time, whenever you'd like to on the trail. So I think that's a great repositioning of an event, a fundraiser that we can all participate in. And as a reminder, for every five dollars that is donated through that, it, it equates to one meal for a senior. So please support that if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir, thank you.
Mayor Protem Bavakwa?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want again to say thank you to everyone who is out there making sure that our streets are safe and everyone is safe and working hard to get us back to functioning fully. So I know it's been a tough, tough job and working extra, extra hours to do everything. I know many that we don't even hear about. So thank you all very much for that. And if we could just get one updated like org chart of who all our new people are and their, and all the different, you know, departments, that would be great.
We're good. Councilmember Keith Lee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our council received some correspondence from a resident asking that we consider adopting Gun Violence Awareness Day on June fifth. They provided us with a resolution and some additional details. And because our residents made this request, I would like to bring it before council and ask that we have a discussion about possibly adopting this resolution before the proposed date of June fifth.
Okay, so we'll put, we'll put that on the next agenda, an agenda item for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? Good, okay. Yeah, I got a, I got a couple things real quickly. Walking, Maria and I, I want to thank everybody for the social distancing that's going on. Everybody is being really good about it and being very respectful. So I want to thank everybody and, you know, we're setting a good example for other cities, I think. I've had a number of comments about the birthday things were for the kids with the fire department and police cars, people like that. And I've actually had a number of adults who would like to have that as well. But I said, I probably think we don't do that. So thank you to the chiefs, the two chiefs for that. Thank you to all the city workers during these difficult times. And thanks to Blaine and his staff. I know they're working very, very hard. And I appreciate that very much. And also, last thing is, we're having a virtual coffee with the mayor this Thursday from five to six. So people can virtually come in and ask questions. And I want to thank Jane for, Jane and the city manager for helping put that together. So we're going to try that and get just another way to outreach to the community. So is there any, Blaine, is there any other outside people who would like to comment for public comment?
Don't see any.
See anybody either, okay? So again, thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your leadership during these difficult times. And we will see you at the next council meeting. Be in a germ, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.